Do our members introduce themselves?
I'm Beth Cassavant.
Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlon.
Carlos Garcia.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant Town Manager.
And again, I'm John Samia, Chair. Next item on the agenda under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Having moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to approve the minutes of October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four meeting, and November fifth, twenty-twenty-four workshop.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something. Do we have the, I have the workshop minutes. Did I miss the meeting minutes?
No, I don't have.
Were they in a different folder?
Okay. Why don't we take the November fifth dropped in late? So let's do the November fifth meetings and we can minutes and we can approve October twenty-second at our next meeting?
Okay.
So why don't you do that? So we'll just take up the November fifth workshop minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
I'm moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, announcements and reports. Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the town clerk, the staff, the police, and all the volunteers who helped facilitate a smooth election day last week. We had about seventy-three percent turnout in town, so also appreciate the voters for getting out and voting in last week's election.
Thank you. Anything else? So we also held office hours before the meeting today, as we do at our first Tuesday meeting of the month. We had several town residents come to see us today and had a wide variety of conversations. We appreciated that opportunity and welcome all of you today as well to come to future office hours with the Select Board. So good discussion. And then our next Tuesday is town meeting, our next Tuesday meeting, and the month is with Town Manager's Office Hours as well. So that's all we have for announcements and reports. We'll now go to Town Manager's report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. Just one quick announcement. We will be adding an additional week of yard waste collections. No additional cost to the town, but we are going to have the contractor also pick up the week of November eighteenth, so they'll be collecting yard waste for the next three consecutive weeks, including this one.
Thank you.
Question about, just in general, pickup. I know we've got a full room, so I think it's a pretty good opportunity to maybe just acknowledge that there's some late pickups and that oftentimes it goes into the next day. I understand from speaking with Assistant Town Manager Baldinger that a lot of that is because of a delay that's happening when they go to drop off, right, at Wheel Abraider?
Sure.
But can residents expect to see improvement? Like, what can we expect? Because I even know, just in my own world, like, sometimes it's eight in the morning and sometimes it's five at night and it's kind of, sometimes it's trash and sometimes it's just recycling and sometimes it's both.
Yeah. So, I mean, the biggest improvements that are on the horizon is whenever the contractor is able to have all their new vehicles, which can take both recycling and solid waste materials through the same vehicle. And those are expected after the first of the year, so that will be probably one of the biggest improvements that they'll make. So they don't, sometimes they have to use trucks that can only take a single material, which means they have to run the route twice or use two different trucks. So there are improvements on the way. This is a challenge for entering into any new contract cycle because we require all new vehicles and they don't make those orders until we sign the contracts, and it takes about a year to get those trucks built. So that is on the horizon. We continue to pressure and utilize the provisions within the contract, including monetary damages if we're, if necessary to deal with the issues that we're having with the contractor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy Thirty-One. No one has expressed desire to speak this evening. Just so those in the audience know, this is an opportunity to, for citizens to provide public comments during a meeting on matters within our board authority. Those wishing to speak at a regularly scheduled meeting should notify the Chair through the Select Board's office by the end of business on the day before their next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. Next item on the agenda is meetings and hearings. It's a presentation by Greg Richards, lead petitioner regarding Article Ten in the November twenty-four town meeting, special town meeting. Mr. Richards will provide a presentation regarding Article Ten, which is a citizen's petition that seeks to change the planning board from a body appointed by the town manager to one elected by the residents. As we had gone with correspondence with Mr. Richards before, and this was in line with the time that he'd spent at Finance Committee up to eight minutes for your presentation, which is pretty much what you had done at Finance Committee. And then this, just a reminder, this is not a public hearing. So thank you and good evening. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Once again, yes, I'm Greg Richards, sixteen Hickory Drive. And, you know, I'm not here tonight to convince you, you know, or try to change your mind. Really, I'm here representing the hundred-and-eighty-five residents who had signed the petition and wanted to leverage the opportunity tonight to speak to any town meeting members who might be in the audience or watching at home. You know, I had not planned originally to be the lead petitioner. As another resident, I had brought the idea of this article, you know, that being to change from an appointed to an elected board to members of this body, I think, in the office hours, maybe through some individual private meetings. You know, unfortunately, that didn't get the support from this body that the resident had hoped, so we acquired that citizen's petition to get us here this evening. You know, several years ago, this board, working with consultants in the community, had developed a twenty-thirty strategic plan. Part of that is developing the vision for Shrewsbury, which is, you know, for Shrewsbury to be a vibrant, inclusive, collaborative community where all can thrive. One of those key strategic outcomes is being an engaged and connected community, you know, with intentional inclusion and outreach, you know, to build trust in government and services and have strong relationships between the town government and the residents. You know, many of you may be aware that I do a show on Shrewsbury Media Connection called The Unselex with Brian Costello. And the only reason I mention that is through that show, we have gotten a lot of feedback from residents. You know, residents reach out to us and share some of the concerns and things that they want to see changed in town. And that, that feedback is very consistent, right? They're concerned with ongoing developments in town and how those developments may impact the character of Shrewsbury or maybe their quality of life. You know, they're frustrated with feeling like they're often not heard when they provide feedback and opinions to our appointed leaders. And, you know, they're troubled with potential future developments that may prevent them from staying in their homes due to that increased tax burden. You know, I personally have attended a lot of planning board meetings this year, you know, including the MBTA Communities Act and those regarding the warehouse project on Clinton Street. But, but I want to be really clear. You know, this petition was not about a single outcome. You know, it's about a series of decisions and a pattern of behavior from the planning board. You know, I watched in many of these meetings as residents shared concerns and impacts on their quality of life, who felt very dismissed and ignored. You know, none clearer than how that hearing on the warehouses ended. You know, the planning board continued a public hearing where multiple residents felt that they have, we're going to get another opportunity to share some of those concerns and speak, only to arrive at the next meeting for that public hearing to be closed, preventing them from sharing any last feedback. Now, I know people have shared, saying, hey, the residents had tons of opportunities. There was many, many meetings for them to share that feedback and things were getting repetitive. But, you know, when you're not validated, or you feel like you're not heard, you often tend to be repetitive. You know, so I decided there must be a better way, you know, and I started doing research, right? And I looked at Holliston. Holliston had a warehouse project very, very similar to what happened here in Shrewsbury. However, the outcome of that hearing was much different. Holliston was able to deny permitting of that warehouse project. And one of the key reasons is because Holliston has an elected board, right? Now, I could fully understand whether you're an elected board or an appointed board, you must follow the law, right? The zoning bylaws are there for you to follow. However, that planning board, being elected, took a proactive approach. They worked with town council, they worked with the planner, and they brought multiple articles to town meeting to craft their zoning bylaws and make changes, to allow them the flexibility and to prevent developments that residents shared concerns about. Here in Shrewsbury, however, it seems as though developers have brought articles to town meeting, right? And those, those developer articles intend to support the developer, allowing them to build more easily without potentially taking in the full feedback of our residents. Right? You know, this specific petition, right, will also allow us, as I mentioned, to meet our goals of being a more engaged and connected community. One of those key strategies is in expanding interest and engagement with Shrewsbury's boards and committees. You know, what better way of getting engagement than for elections? You know, elections in those campaigns bring a lot more awareness to not only those who are running, but also to planning and how that impacts our community. You know, it also meets an objective we have of intentional inclusion of outreach. You know, one thing, Mr. Samia, back in July, when you were discussing appointments, you, you made a comment, and I quote, "You know, we know we have a lot of great residents in town, and to be able to get them to service will only make us a better community." And I couldn't agree more. So having that election process and allowing more residents potentially to serve would meet that goal and make us a better community. Specifically on planning, in two thousand and eighteen, the mass planners did a survey of a hundred-and-forty-six towns that have planners. Seventy percent of those have elected boards, only thirty percent are appointed, so Shrewsbury would be in the minority. Our neighboring communities, Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, Grafton, Millbury, West Boylston, all have elected boards. Now, in the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Mizikar informed us, when he pulled out the microfiche from nineteen fifty-three, of when our town was founded, we were an early adopter of a more structured government, right? That eliminated many of the elected positions in favor of appointed positions, and I believe in the hopes of a smoother and more effectively-run government. But one of the key differences from nineteen fifty-three today, I would say, is the access to information, right? Those appointed members of those boards needed more specialized tools and access to information in nineteen fifty-three. If they wanted to know, how does a specific zoning law impact them or what mass general law is, it was much more difficult to get the information. Today, any resident in this community can find out more than they'd ever want to know about zoning and planning just by pulling out their phone and doing a simple Google search. You know, there are actually two-hundred-and-ninety-two towns in Massachusetts. Thirty-two only have representative town meeting like Shrewsbury. However, out of those, twenty still have an elected planning board. So the majority, such as Bill Ricka, Chelmsford, Natick, Norwood, and Wellesley. In that, two thousand and seventeen, Ipswich looked at a similar article in their town meeting, which would have moved the board to an elected board, in that they interviewed both towns with elected and appointed boards. And one of the key feedback from those communities with appointments were that there's unclear accountability through appointments. You know, if you don't agree with what a board is doing or how they're acting, what is the recourse for the community to make change? Secondly, the process is really foggy. You know, people don't understand who might apply or what criteria are being used to make those appointments. You know, some of the feedback specific to Shrewsbury is there's a sense that there might be cronyism, meaning, you know, that power and authority are using their influence in favor of their friends and associates regardless of qualifications. You know, one example could be, here in Shrewsbury, where you have multiple members of the same family serving on multiple appointed boards at the same time. Now, in a community with over forty thousand residents, it's easy to see how somebody might perceive that there could be better-served applicants to those roles than the members of the same family. You know, many people in this community has also indicated to me that they just don't bother to apply when, when positions are open, because they feel as though because they have a specific viewpoint, that they'll never be selected. And lastly, on the appointed boards is they often tend to get stale, right? There's a, it's not a good ability to get a lot of independent thinking. Some people stay on the boards really long. One of our planning board members has been on the board for over twenty-six years, and we know a lot has changed in this community in the past twenty-six years. Now, I know elections can have board members that would stay on a long period of time, but that's the choice of that community. If that community wants those people to represent them for that period of time, fine. But if you don't have that control through that appointment, it's not as easy for that community to make a change. I understand that change is hard and many fear change, but just because we moved potentially to an elected board doesn't mean that we're going to change the makeup of our board. Those existing members of the planning board could run, right? They can take their qualifications and experience directly to the community and make their case, right? This does, by this change, does meet our collective goal of being more engaged and connected by bringing awareness to the planning board and letting every resident know the impact they may have on the character and quality of life in Shrewsbury. I do want to address a couple questions and concerns that came out of that Finance Committee hearing. You know, one of them was a comment by Mr. Mizikar, that he had concerns that this article may have two fatal flaws, and those were, it doesn't specifically say the number of resident, or the number of members, excuse me, and the length of the terms. You know, however, I disagree with Mr. Mizikar that those are fatal flaws. You know, there's two pieces to the town meeting side, the article and a motion. And motions can propose actions which can be reasonably inferred from the warrant article. The warrant article intends simply to move from an appointed to an elected board, keeping the same number of members, which is five, in the terms of five years. If a motion has to be made to spell that out specifically that those changes would be made, I, in my opinion, I would constitute that as a reasonable inference. Secondly, Mr. Mizikar, in the video on preparing these warrant articles, his article preview, I should say, stated specifically, I quote, "There would be an inherent conflict between elected bodies should the planning board stray beyond what the responsibilities would be." You know, this conflict, I don't believe manifests itself. As I mentioned, there's twenty other communities that have a representative town meeting who's elected and an elected planning board, and those twenty communities do not seem to have this inherent conflict. But even if we had the conflict, conflict is a necessary part of teamwork and innovation. You know, conflict and disagreement lead to problem solving. How do people with differing opinions come together if all viewpoints can't be represented? You know, I spoke with a current Select Board member and a former chair of a planning board in a neighboring community, and I specifically asked, "In all your time as chairman of the planning board, or as your time as a select board, have you ever had conflict between either the Select Board or the Planning Board?" And he indicated he's never had such conflict. You know, the last fear I hear is that the reason we need appointed boards is there's specialized skills and technical skills are required. But according to data town, over sixty-five percent of our residents of Shrewsbury have a college degree or higher, and many in advanced technical fields. I think there are many, many individuals who would welcome being a member of the planning board and could definitely meet any qualifications so required. Even the Finance Committee itself as an appointed board with special skill sets doesn't have all the necessary information or necessary skills. In one of the prior meetings, one member of the board indicated that the board, himself and the board, don't understand town budgeting as well as Mr. Mizikar. And the chairman even articulated, he didn't feel the board had the skill set to create or recommend a new financial model and ask for support of consultants. And I'm not trying to knock the Finance Committee. The reason we have other resources available in our community is to leverage those. The planning board has a town planner. They also have town council. If there's questions or uncertainties, they can ask and get those answered. We also have the ability to do our own research. So I think, you know, articulating that these special skills or fears about being able to do the job just aren't founded. You know, I'll close with this. You know, this article simply sets out to ask town meeting if we as a community value power and control over self-government and community engagement. You know, I say, when in doubt, let the people decide. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions for you, and then I'll open it up. So that is a quote that I talked about, appointed. And what we heard at the Finance Committee meeting was from an appointed member of the Personnel Board regarding the level of comfort of actually providing her skills in an appointed position versus an elected position. And we talk about, Mr. Mizikar had provided, that there were thirty-seven applicants for the planning board, twenty-six different individuals, and there were eight appointments from July of seventeen. But we also know that if you look at the last five elections for Select Board, School Committee, and not Board of Library Trustees, two of five elections have been uncontested for both the Select Board and the School Committee. And on Board of Library Trustees, they've been uncontested elections. Isn't there, I guess the challenge I'm having is people aren't running for elected office now. You saw in the same Ipswich report that there were towns that got write-in votes of ten to fifteen votes. That's it. And then they're on it, and you're going to have somebody on election because people aren't running for it. It's five or ten thousand dollars. So what I'm struggling with is people aren't running for elected office. Planning board, more likely than not, will even be less than one, be one person every time, if that. And to me, you're closing off access, whereas we've had a lot of people apply for the planning board. So just help me with, understand your view on that?
Sure.
Given the history and same deal for town meeting, you have now, when, when, years ago, you'd have fifteen people for ten seats. But now you're lucky if you have enough people for enough seats. If not, you have a few write-in votes because you don't have enough people. So what's your thought on that?
Well, first thing to address, the expense piece of it, when you articulated, hey, five or ten thousand dollars, I guess that's assuming to run or perceived as what it would cost to do so. You know, I think we have to be a little bit creative or think about things more creatively. I think there's technology in ways that, as a community, for instance, to allow people to, I would say, not quote-unquote "apply," but why does it have to be a formalized campaign? You know, having a website say, here's your candidates, you know, posting information about those candidates, making things like Shrewsbury Media Connection available to go on and speak to those voters to make it decide. I think the problem is that people have a, I think there is some self-limiting belief there on what the barrier to election is. Like, people say, oh, I don't want to run. I don't want to be out in public. I don't want to go door-to-door. And nowadays, you don't have to do that. So I think, as we've tried to make, I think some of this board and others have, especially in town meeting, done some community outreach to try to get more engagement. And I think some of that could be not only with maybe this board, but also trying to encourage others through, hey, this, you know, it's, it's not that difficult to run. And we could probably make it a little bit more, so to say, make it an easier barrier of entry for those to do so. But like I say, I think, I balance that too. I think it's a fair thing that some people don't want to have their name out there, right? But, you know, when you look at it, you're really representing the community, and we have to make that decision to say, what specific positions? I'm not suggesting everything would be, right, elected. But my view on planning is, you know, what shapes the character of a community more than planning? You know, where do we build? What do we build? What do we leave open? How do we look? How do we compare to our neighboring communities? So I think that's an important one where we should allow public and those residents to make that decision, right? And you should be able to go out there and say, you know, I think I'm best served for this, right? And I really want to be there, and this is something I'm passionate about, right? Because observationally, right, when I kind of look at things, if even if I look at the last Planning Board meeting and how they restructured, right, if I didn't know anything, if I look at the outside in, not many wanted to be there. Nobody wanted to raise their hand to even be the clerk, right? It's like, well, I'm going to be in Florida for six weeks. I don't want to do this. So it's like, I don't feel like they're best representing me. So I think there's both sides, right? Yeah, I understand there is a barrier. People fear the election. But there's also the thing about people don't apply because they just think it's, what's the point? I'm not going to get picked. So I think you have both sides there.
Okay. And then one other question, and then I'll open it up. That isn't one way to look at the planning board, though. They're set, they're limited with rules and regulations with whom they need to work with, and whether it's the bylaws that are set by town meeting or by the state, right? So is the issue with the planning board, or is it with the actual body that sets the policies or the bylaws within the planning board must operate? So to me, it's analogous to the judiciary. You don't want an elected judiciary or one that could make that argument, right?
Yeah.
So what's the thought on that? That if, is it, more of a question. Is it a planning board, is it a planning board issue, or is it a town meeting issue with the bylaws themselves?
Okay. It's a very good question, and I think I have a fairly good response to it. My argument would be this. I believe that the planning board, yes. Is their primary focus to follow the bylaws, yes. But setting the vision and already modifying or crafting the bylaws that best serve the community is also a part of the planning board and the planning department. And my argument with town meeting is as follows, and I, and I've mentioned this many times. Town meeting relies heavily on the recommendations of the board. If you look at town meeting, and it's a philosophical discussion, the participation in those who fully do their research is low, right? Most rely on, if a planning board article is recommended by the planning department, or any article is recommended by Finance Committee, whoever it is, more likely to pass, right? So to enable that change, those, what gets brought to town meeting goes a hundred percent through the planning board. Those planning board articles are recommended to town meeting. If they don't recommend it, they don't get voted on, right? And for a citizen that's not on that board to say, you know what? I think we should have more special permits and less by right zoning. The odds of that person being able to go through the citizen's petition without the support of the planning department and getting the article to pass are very, very low. So I believe, based off of how the structure of the representative town meeting and how things get to town meeting, that planning board owns what is the future and how do they craft and morph our planning, along with the planner, right, to support the community.
Okay.
It's part of their role, I would argue.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to make the same, or ask the same question regarding sort of the series of outcomes and whether or not the root cause lies with the, the planning board or with, with town meeting. I agree. I think we saw with the Clinton Street Warehouse, where regardless of the semantics of whether or not we could have reversed the zoning, town meeting overwhelmingly, even with a lot of community feedback upheld the zoning there. So I do still think that a lot of, of power, and we've seen historically, you know, residents are upset about the growth, but the planning board before would bring proposed bylaw changes to, to town meeting, and town meeting shot it down. I believe it was about lot sizes, et cetera. So I guess one of my questions for you, you're not a town meeting member currently. Are you considering?
Of course, a hundred percent. I think you'll see a dramatically different level of participation in the elections in May. I will say that.
Okay. I did want to just make a comment. I think, I personally, I recognize your comments about sort of the experience of residents in public hearings. And I've talked to the town manager a couple of times about how I do believe that all boards, committees that are managing public hearings could stand some training or some protocols on how we handle it. And I do agree that the, the situation of the hearing being closed at that final, you know, hearing on, on the Clinton Street Warehouse was, was unfortunate. So I, I do think we, I recognize that we can, we can make improvements, and I appreciate the feedback and your engagement. And I hope that moving forward, we can, you know, improve on that, that experience for people who do take the time to be engaged and speak at hearings.
Can I make one comment?
Right.
Your comment. I, I think, the thing about the hearings, I agree with, but I think where we could help people is setting expectations, right? And I think I made a comment, Mr. Mizikar, one time when we discussed, had a discussion is, it would be great, because a lot of, I think there's a lot of assumptions that are made by board members that what they understand, everybody understands. And when you go in front of the public, if they would have opened the meeting and said, well, this is the, the first start of the hearing on the warehouses. Here is what we have in our purview, very clear. Like, we are only able to look at this when we make this. We are only, these are the, this is what we have to decide. We do not have the ability to reject this for these reasons. That's all that's in our purview. I understand that might not be what you want to hear as residents. The only way to correct that is for us to modify our zoning bylaws. If you support those kind of things, we can work through that collectively, right? So that when you get to the end, right, they're not surprised at what happens. And I think that's what really lacks, is that there's a lot of assumptions is how it goes. And, you know, you, you go and you open a hearing, and it's just like, yep, who's the applicant? And nobody knows, what are we talking about? Why are we talking about? What are we going to possibly vote on? That would be great for somebody to lead that effort at any of these hearings, so that people understand what, what the outcomes can be. Because I think you lead people on this, eight, nine months, people have been coming to this, on that project, right, not fully understanding what could or could not be the outcome, right? It's like I said, I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting that you can change the outcome, right, of these. You know, I never said it's never going to be the Wild West where, okay, now because we have an elected board, we're just going to not follow the law, right? It's not, you can't do that. But the process in which things get brought, how that feedback is collective from the community and we change collectively, I think can be dramatic. That's all.
Any other questions?
You know, just, you know, hearing what you're saying, we received a letter, and I know it's not, it wasn't in time.
it wasn't in time to be on correspondence for this agenda. So again, like, from the, a person who was at the Finance Committee public hearing and basically said, like, there's a, there's not a collective understanding, like you're just saying, of what's the process at a, at a public hearing? What are the expectations? What are the norms?
Yeah.
Right, even getting up and knowing that you need to state your name and your address. Like, those simple things sort of need to be set for people because, given a project, it might be someone's first time coming to a Planning Board hearing or coming to a zoning board or appeals hearing. So I'm just curious, right, in light of the article that you're proposing, I, how do you see an elected Board versus an appointed Board making the progress on that? When I, it seems that perhaps we need, whether it's through town staff or through the work of this Board, as was asked in this letter, get those norms out to people? Do we need a document? Do we need a guide?
Well, I guess one of two things. Either appoint different people who have a different skill set, maybe around specifically that. Whether being able to articulate or somebody who wants to engage. Because it's one thing, you know, I think it's a stereotype, right? I know that, you know, more technical people tend to say, I'm more introverted, maybe not as engaging, you know, when it comes to public speaking or whatnot. But, you know, I think, I think the driver behind, you know, the people through elections, I believe tend to want to be in a more service mindset than any more, let's say, just, I want to, I have a task in front of me. Where if I was an appointed Board member, I could be interested in building and development. Whereas an elected official, I'm actually there because I want to, I have a more interest in the, serving the community or what the long-term vision and character is of the community. Not always, but I'm saying, I think there's a lens and a mindset from that. So that I think when you're on that Board and people have put you there, you're apt to more want to serve it. However, if you come through as an appointment, potentially, and whether you applied or somebody asked you to apply, right? You may have just a different lens, right, of why you're there. You know, there could be a little bit more self-serving reasons depending on what it could be, right? So I think, in my mind, I just think that's a nuance of what I think you might gain with elections versus appointments. Once again, opinion.
Um, you know, I think there's a little bit of, you know, you made some comments about town meeting members being largely uninformed and sort of coming to meetings unprepared and uninformed about issues and just sort of going with what was recommended by the Planning Board. But I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I think we have a town, a body, you know, two hundred and thirty town meeting members who are incredibly passionate about the community, who are elected. And as you just said, you know, people who are elected into these positions tend to be more service-minded. They're serving the community, they're representing the community that they, you know, that they put their names on a ballot to represent. And, you know, prior to, you know, my time serving on this Board, I was a town meeting member. I was not politically connected in town at all. Did not have anybody in my social network who was politically connected in any way. And I went into it sort of not knowing the process and the system, but, you know, diving in headfirst to learn about it. And I think that, that the majority of our town meeting members are similar, you know, similarly passionate about doing their best to serve the community. So I just, you know, I just have to say, in defense of the people that represent our community and town meeting, I wholeheartedly disagree with the fact, you know, the statement that you made that they are uninformed decision-makers.
I didn't say all, right, some. And if you look at our attendance, I would argue that I'm correct. That if you look at attendance, I guarantee you, one day, well, not guarantee, my prediction based off past data, we would have thirty-three percent of the town meeting members not show up. We've had town meeting members who don't show up for town meeting for three to five straight nights of town meeting. I would argue that's not very engaged and connected. I would argue that they don't really view that that way. So I would think holistically, I wasn't trying to make a broad statement. I think there is a large percentage of town meeting members, however, who are not there for the vested interest. They could be there for, I just want to be able to say I'm a town meeting member, or whatever it might be, right? I'm not a town meeting member, but I guarantee you, I'm probably one of the few people who could tell you what every article is and I could give you a little bit of a background of what's there. Why? Because I'm interested in it. And am I going to run for town meeting? Yes. But, right, I think if you observe, this is my eyes telling me, I sat in town meeting and I observed in spring. And I would argue that, yeah, there is a large group of town meeting members that I a hundred percent agree with you, are there, do their research, are well-informed on articles. But there is a large percentage who are not, just based off observation.
Thanks. Any other questions? Carlos?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't really, I don't think I have a question, but I do want to thank you for bringing this petition and the petitioners for being here. I think it's an important conversation for us to have as, you know, I think we all want to see more engagement with our boards and committees. I think what I've been struggling with this question is, I do think that this would add additional barriers for folks to be engaged and connected with our, with our Planning Board. You know, for, for example, changing our Planning Board from an appointed to an elected position would not allow folks in this community who may have migrated here from other countries who want to serve but are not currently citizens yet from participating. Because in order to be an elected official, you have to be a citizen. I think that goes against our goals as a town for our DEI initiatives, which is important to me, serving in this position. And then I, I think we've touched upon it, just all of the other barriers to entry, fundraising, talking to voters. I think that's really a daunting task to ask people to do when you have a process right now where you can apply to be on the Planning Board, you speak to the town manager, you have a one-on-one meeting. I think that's a lower, lower bar than it is to go out in front of all forty thousand residents of the community to, to run for a position. So I guess that's where I come from with this question. I, I appreciate this conversation because I do think that this has given us some next steps in ways that we can increase the participation in all of our boards and committees across the town, not just the Planning Board. So really, I do thank you for, for this conversation.
So can I ask you a question? Follow-up question?
Sure.
So I, I understand where you're coming from, but there is a lot of other appointed positions in town and there's certain ones by statute, right, that people can't participate in. So I guess, what's your viewpoint on, let's say, the Select Board, right? Has to be elected. The school committee has to be elected. So the same residents you're talking about are not able to participate in those. So there's always, I think, going to be a dividing line of certain things that, yeah, may not be open to all, but there's still a lot of opportunities and a lot of committees for that. So I guess, what's your thought on, hey, there's certain people who, if they're really interested in the school committee, for instance, wouldn't be able to run?
Yeah, that's a fair question. That's certainly a fair question, but I think that there are plenty of ways for folks to still get involved and get engaged. Just because you may not be able to serve as an elected official, you still are able to talk to your elected representatives, you're still able to show up at public hearings and voice your concerns and your opinions, you're able to have meetings with any one of us. So I, I don't think that that, I don't think that that's...
I just wanted to, you, you want to go first?
Just a, just a clarification. The executive body of a local government does not have to be elected. The town manager, there's, you know, you can have a city council, which is your legislative body, and the town manager who serves as the executive.
But if you live in a city, but if we're in a town, you do?
Nope, doesn't matter. Ten thousand is the threshold.
No, the Select Board. You're saying that the Select Board doesn't have to be elected?
The, the executive body of the community, which the Select Board is in Shrewsbury, does not have to be elected.
It could be appointed.
Correct.
By whom?
The legislative body, which would be...
Oh, town meeting.
A, a town council or a city council, CIL.
But that's not our structure today.
Yes, it is.
I'm confused.
It's not our structure, it is a...
It's not our, it's not...
Yeah, it's not our structure.
It's not our structure today.
No, it's not our structure.
It's not a structure.
Yeah, thank you. I was like, what?
It was just a, yeah.
Confused.
Beth?
A participle, I think. Just to the point that, that you're making, Mr. Garcia, you know, we're talking about policymaking boards, right? The Select Board, the school committee, their policymaking boards, their elected boards. You know, I just wanted to just share my experience, having served on the DEI Task Force back in 2020. One of the things that people did talk about was an unwillingness to want to run for an elected position and that being a barrier. And the, the reason cited was cost. Elections are expensive. I think we all saw that just last week. We're just starting to realize now quite, you know, how expensive the more recent elections were at the federal and state level. Again, the Planning Board's focus is very narrow. It includes, right, land use, development for commercial and residential. Part of what I grapple with, with this, is thinking through the relationship between town meeting, which is an elected body, which sets zoning, and the Planning Board, which then carries through on the directive set by town meeting. I know that, you know, in recent memory, I can think of three decisions, you know, that generated a great deal of controversy in the community. And again, those decisions were all the Planning Board carrying out what was said at town meeting. So that's just something that I think about when I consider the article. I want to be careful that by changing one part of the way that our government operates, we aren't removing authority from another part. And by that part, I mean town meeting members. I do have great respect for our representative town meeting and their ability to weigh in on zoning. I think that ultimately, that is the body that sets the direction for the community. And whenever I start asking people questions, it always ends up going back to the Pyramid Mall. I don't know why, but it does. It just seems that whenever I try to learn more about the town when I first moved here, I was like, well, why do we have, why is there so much residential versus commercial? And then I get the story of the Pyramid Mall, which I'm assuming you already know, which was what was supposed to go in where Turnberry is. And town meeting said, absolutely not, I don't want this. This is very, this is like a very quick retelling. I'm sure there's more detail. And the Pyramid Mall never happened and instead we got Turnberry, which is like four hundred houses, right? And with that decision back in the eighties, Shrewsbury became a residential community. Like, we had made a decision. And that was a decision of town meeting. And then when I think about, or I ask about, okay, well, what about lot sizes? Can we control development with lot sizes? Again, like, those kinds of articles went to town meeting and people sitting in those seats thought about the parcel of land that they had and how, you know, that parcel of land might have been something they were saving and planning to sell to, you know, finance a college education, give to a, a family member, finance their retirement. And, and so there was an unwillingness to want to do something around lot sizes. You know, so, so many of the times when I ask questions, the answers somehow lead me back to town meeting and the decisions of town meeting that have happened over decades that have shaped the community that we live in today. And so, you know, this is an isolated moment in time. I want to make sure that when I make a decision on something like this, that I'm thinking long-term, right, before I make a change in a form of government that has served the community for seventy years, do I pull one thread and suddenly other things unravel in a way that is unintended?
Sure.
Those are the things that kind of go through my mind. And again, I, I am very interested to hear what town meeting members have to say. And it's, it's really good to see a full room here. And I hope that you're right. I hope there is more participation in town meeting. You know, I've, I've served in, in different capacities in local government over the years that I've lived in the community. But one of the things that I worked on early on was trying to get the first override to pass. And one of the hurdles to getting the first override to pass was getting enough support at town meeting. And so having to go out and talk to people and try to find those like-minded people and encourage them to run for town meeting, as I'm sure you know, is no easy task. And running for town meeting usually isn't an expensive proposition, right? You can do it pretty easily, you know, not having to set up a campaign committee. There's no, you know, filings that you need to do or things of that nature that are regulatory. And, and so you, you see how building the support that you're looking for at town meeting can lead to change over time. And it's a slow process. There's really nothing slower, I think, sometimes in municipal government. But again, those are the kinds of things that, that go through my mind, right? So whether I later on this evening vote to recommend or not to recommend, it's not anything to do with you. It's not a reaction to the people that maybe have a viewpoint that's different from mine. I understand all the frustrations with the Planning Board and I think a lot of it is related to process and not understanding at the outset, like you said, what is the expectation, what can I expect when I walk into this room?
Can I just clarify one thing?
Go ahead.
Sure.
You mentioned that you were concerned about not taking or changing something with town meeting. Town meeting is, the way that they would, you know, vote on zoning is not going to change whether it's an elected or appointed Planning Board. That process is unchanged. I'm just confused as to, I think you had made a comment about, that was one of your concerns, that you would take something away from...
So the authority to set our zoning, to vote on our zoning bylaws, right? That, that's a town meeting authority.
Correct.
That's the responsibility of town meeting to set that direction and the Planning Board enforces it in the current natural order of things.
Right. But they don't, town meeting is not bringing planning articles to town meeting. I mean, the Planning Board is crafting the articles through the Planning Department that gets to town meeting. Town meeting is ultimately still making the decision. And they're going to make the decision on this, right, specifically.
They are going to make the decision on this. I guess what I, what I am getting at is, I think that there's a conflict there, just inherently.
And what about the other twenty towns that have the same exact structure? So this isn't a new, this isn't a new model, right? We're not breaking any new ground. There's twenty towns that have an elected town meeting body who also have an elected Planning Board. The majority, in fact. We're still in the minority. So the concern's constantly over, I'm afraid of this, I'm afraid of that. That there's models out there, we can look at the towns, we can go talk to them about that and see. And like I mentioned, in Finance Committee, if there was really all of these issues, people would make changes. Other towns would change, right? Or the Massachusetts general laws would change to say, this is, you know, unsustainable the way we're at. So while I understand, like, the thought of change and doing something different sometimes, you know, is uncomfortable, we have the same models other places to take a look at, that's all.
I guess, you know, I definitely hear your point, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just continue on. You know, each community is different. The character of each community, the way a community operates, its charter, the length of time it's been operating, you know. I can only speak to Shrewsbury. I only know what's working or not working in Shrewsbury. So I, I can't opine on other communities and what decisions that they make. I do, I was happy to hear you say, you know, that, that an elected person might be more of a public servant, right? Because I definitely see myself as a public servant. I think you run the risk of maybe lessening the pool of applicants when you bring it to an election. But I do think that, that appointed people and elected people are all going to be working from the same set of guidelines and rules that are set by, by town meeting. I don't know that making an elected Planning Board is going to create the kind of change or the solution that perhaps you're looking for. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any more questions? Teresa, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe not, maybe not a question. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I haven't talked to my colleagues about various, where each person stands on this. You know, when the petition came forward, I was, I'd never really given it serious consideration. And my initial reaction was, I don't know. Like, I, I didn't have a strong opinion, but your petition forced me to evaluate it because my job is to have an opinion and a vote, both as a Select Board member, but more importantly, as a town meeting member. So I did talk to people from outside of Shrewsbury and people who had been in elected positions on Planning Boards, et cetera. And a lot of the feedback I got was, I agree with you, it's sort of on the surface, so many towns and cities do have elected Planning Boards. But there was a lot of feedback in terms of it being a little bit more politicized. On one hand, you have residents who want to stop growth, who will try to squash, you know, major commercial development. And then you have developers who are going to sort of lobby for those positions because they want to drive. And it's sort of finding that right balance of people who are willing to look at, you know, the, the community as a whole. So I guess, I, I look at someone like you, Mr. Richards, who I, I get the impression you've been really focused on the behavior of, of town government and I don't want you to walk away kind of like we're, we're squashing it. I think you have raised a lot of good considerations. I do think that regardless of the outcome, if it, if it turns to be an elected Board, then so be it. But if it turns to, to stay appointed, I do think you raised some important considerations on how we can improve engagement, how we can improve, again, the resident experience. But, you know... But, you know, I think this can be a catalyst for change either way, some positive change. But I do think that, you know, understanding that, being in a role like that is representing, you know, not just residents, but private landowners who rely on the bylaws and upholding their rights as well and just, you know, finding that right balance. So I do also worry about, you know, you go to elected and, you know, we have dismal voter turnout in Shrewsbury. You know, hopefully, it sounds like you're on a crusade to change that as well, so...
Crusade is a strong term.
But, you know, I do...
I think it could be improved, I would agree.
It can definitely be improved. But I do think that, you know, I kind of just want to go on record as saying, like, I don't want you to feel like you're just getting pushed back, I think.
I don't. And I appreciate, and I would say, part of this process that I've really enjoyed, and I shared the same feedback with Mr. Mizikar, is what you don't see in the boards is what we've seen at the finance committee in tonight, where residents can come up, speak and dialogue, right? Because one of the things I, I know, totally off topic, but the things that really bother me is rule, I don't know, what is it, 37? I forget, select board rule 37 pursuant, you know, you get three minutes, you got to send an email. Why do we put barriers up in front of residents to come speak? And even when we come speak, I get it, open meeting law, you have to be on the agenda if you want to talk about it, but it seems like there's got to be a little modern way to do things. So if we want to come and have a dialogue like this...
Yes!
Right? If we want a dialogue like this, right, in front of the board, I think this is super healthy. And I'm not expecting everyone to agree, and I don't need everyone to agree. That's not the point, right? The point is that I'm allowed to have a varying opinion, that we can talk civilly, right, and have discourse around it, and still part as friends, right? It's not personal. It's like, hey, I believe this, you believe that, let's talk about it. But a lot of these board meetings, you never get that, right? You don't get this kind of dialogue, even amongst the board members, right? You don't see the planning board, oh, you guys have to deliberate and make a decision. There was no deliberation, zero! So when you say that has to be in public, we know that's not happening, right? It's not. So those are the things I think that frustrate residents, and if there's a way to address that, and I know there's other laws that govern that, and it's not always possible, I get it. That's where the frustration comes from.
Part of the thought, too, and appreciate it. Appreciate you bringing your presentation, appreciate the way you've delivered it. And I agree, you can, and that's why we're asking questions, we're...
Yeah.
But the other piece, too, right before this, that's why we started office hours. Whereas you may be comfortable coming on camera and presenting, most people aren't. For the same reason we talked about why people want one for elected office, they don't like to put themselves out there. That's the idea with office hours. That's the idea with the town manager's office hours. And that's the engagement that you've had with the town manager. You met with him a couple times.
Yes.
You know, right? But the idea is, we're available. It's, that's the thought that a lot of people aren't comfortable on camera and want to have it. We have had continued increased number of people coming, asking a lot of different questions. We don't know the answer, we'll get it back to them. That's what we're here for. We're all residents of the community. That's the whole idea here.
Right. And the perception, and this is the last, regarding that, and I appreciate the office hours, but I always ask, why does it have to feel like a different experience between office hours and a meeting, right? You know, that's the part that I always struggle with. Yes, you come to office hours, but that same level engagement could be in this format, depending on how, what's on the agenda, right? If I wanted to come and stalk, right, why can't we just say, I always reserve 15 minutes to public comment. If anybody wants to come, you don't have to send an email ahead of time, you don't have to notify. Something's on my mind, and I want to show up and, you know, mention it, I should be able to mention it. That could go for any board in town, right? Because not all boards even allow public comment. So that's just a consistency as a feedback on how do we get more engaged and connected? You know, make it easier for a community through multiple means, right? I appreciate the office hours and then meeting publicly, because I know you do, when people reach out, you're more than willing to meet with them one-on-one. So I appreciate that. But, yeah, I don't know, I don't say I like this format better, but I don't mind. So I do appreciate the time you guys have taken, I appreciate allowing me to come talk. And thank you again.
All right, great. Thank you for coming.
I want to answer that. Before you clap, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, so I just, I just wanted to just say, like, a lot of what we do that, or any board does, right, that seems like it's closed is because we're bound by open meeting law. And I'm sure you've read open meeting law. But the only way, and if you haven't read open meeting law, it's homework for everyone, read open meeting law. The only way you can talk to all five of us is if it's a posted meeting. And that's why we don't talk to each other. Like, tonight, there was office hours in here, and John and Teresa were sitting here with a resident, and I walked in the door and I immediately turned around and walked away, because I never want there to be a perception that there's quorum when it's not a posted meeting. And so I just want to be clear, that's why it's, that's why we set up office hours, right? So that there's an opportunity for you to talk to two of us, because you can talk to not a quorum, right? And I just want to make sure that's clear to the public, too, that though, some of the, our hands are tied in a lot of ways that you're asking for engagement, because we are bound by open meeting.
I understand, I think I said that. I said, I understand that there's laws that govern it, prevent us from doing it, but in an ideal world, it'd be great if it wasn't.
It would be. I agree. Open meeting law makes things harder.
Yeah, same as you, Teresa. Like, I think if you have a...
Does it matter? I don't know. Thank you. Sorry.
Go ahead, Teresa.
I was just going to say, if there's a way to, you know, if office hours, because it's not the full board, I agree with you that we can always look at opportunities for people to engage in different ways and for people who want to do it on camera in a public meeting. I think it's also a balance of, this is a business meeting, there's a posted agenda, we have a lot of things to get through, and leaving the time and not, you know, we all have families, too. You all have family. You know, we want to get home in a decent hour. So it's sort of like, there's probably a better way of doing it, because I always worry about the public comment period, because I'm like, it's, it's a public comment, it's not a public dialogue. And then if it becomes a public dialogue, then it rolls into an hour plus into the meeting and then, and so, you know, do we carve out one day a month or, like, where we do this, but the whole point is just to engage with residents? I mean, we're open to it. So if you have suggestions, if others have suggestions, I...
Well, I'm assuming if there was a specific topic, we can always ask, right, to be on the agenda, if there was something, and then you put it on as an agenda item, if it's relevant, right?
Correct. It's relevant to us, depending what it is, or call it participation, or we can talk about it. But to have the back and forth dialogue, it's just going to be more natural during office hours than...
No, I like this.
I get it. I mean, it's a unique situation, right? You have, you put a citizen's petition, appreciate you bringing it forward, appreciate the dialogue going back and forth. But there are a lot of things that aren't at this level, right?
Yeah.
That aren't going to require, say, the back and forth and getting into bylaws or history or whatever we're doing in a way of doing business, but it could be more of the mundane, but having a natural conversation that can go any which way. When you're in a structured way like this, it's not going to happen naturally. It's going to be truncated to the issue at hand. You got your three minutes, five minutes, whatever it is. It's still going to be limited. It's just not going to have the opportunity to have the robust conversation, absent a scenario like this and like we've had now. And I appreciate, again, you bringing it to us and us having the opportunity to ask you questions.
It doesn't mean you have 10 citizen's petitions at the next.
Right, so you can talk to us for 10?
Well, the barriers lower.
I'm joking. Please, I meant it.
I'll be happy to.
Just.
We never know. You never know what can happen.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda under new business. You're all more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
You don't want to stay?
Next item on the agenda is agenda item number eight, to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license application of Donald Harbert on behalf of the Shrewsbury Rotary Club for the 2024 Yuletide Market in Light, the comment on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This item requests the board's approval of one-day beer and wine license application on behalf of the Shrewsbury Rotary Club. While the Rotary Club has been granted a one-day license in the past, Mr. Harbert has not been the applicant, so he's required to appear before the board. Is he here?
He's right there.
Ah, great. Welcome.
Want me to stand up here?
No, feel free to sit down, either one. You can sit down.
Whatever you...
You're comfortable, Dan.
Good evening and thank you for coming. So all the, are there any questions for the applicant? This is more of a technical matter, because you have not been on an application before, so thank you for coming.
And if I'd have known that, I got somebody who had done it before to do it.
And all the documents are in order?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, everything's provided.
Any questions? So the only question I have is just tip certified, is there someone there?
Yes, I am tip certified, and we will have two tip certified people there at all times, and we check every ID, even if they look like they're my age, we still check their IDs.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Are you doing the cider again?
Are me?
Are you doing the cider?
We are. Molded wine, it's mold wine.
Molded wine, okay.
The Boy Scouts do cider, so if you don't want wine, you can get cider from the Boy Scouts.
That does not have alcohol in it.
Oh. I assume they're doing it, are they?
They are doing cider, non-alcoholic cider.
So if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I move the board approve the one-day beer and wine license application of Donald Harbert on behalf of the Rotary Club for the Yuletide Market in Light on the comment on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming and thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license application of Niko Agora on behalf of the Cellar Bar and Grill for the 2024 Yuletide Market in Light, the comment on Saturday, December 4th, December, excuse me, 7th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Similarly, so this item, actually, this is the first time that the Cellar Bar and Grill has applied for the one-day license, so Mr. Agora is required to be here.
Hi, how are you? How are you?
Good evening. Also the owner of Monty's, right?
Yeah, for 25 years.
Yeah. No, it's, Cellar's a great place, and thank you for participating this year, I assume, tip certified as well?
Yes.
Okay. IDs check every person or...
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be there myself.
Great. Well, you've done a nice job at the Cellar, so it's...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And the Steak Loft has been replaced with Verywell. You did a nice job brightening it up, and good to see you're always busy, so...
Thank you.
Welcome. Any questions or comments?
Thanks for your support.
Yeah.
What will you be serving?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll be there. Definitely, I'll be there.
Okay. Do you, what are you serving? What, I know you're...
Beer and wine.
Beer and wine?
Cans, nothing, actually, we're saying just beers. Just beers.
Okay.
It's simple.
Just curious. Okay.
Great. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the one-day beer and wine license application of Niko Agora, Cellar Bar and Grill for the Yuletide Market, December 7th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Proud to seeing you there. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the one-day beer and wine license application of JT Ethier on behalf of Greater Good Brewing Co. for the 2024 Yuletide Market in Light, on the comment on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. They are different times, and they are by purpose. So unlike the previous applicants, Mr., JT Ethier has been approved for a one-day license for the Yuletide Market in the past, so there's no requirement that he appears before the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I have just have a question.
Sure.
Why are these times all different?
Hey, good question.
Yeah, so Mr. Sami inquired about that. It's just when the vendors are showing up to the market.
But if the market starts at four and they're not getting their license until five, can we amend this and make it four?
So it would be when the vendor themselves are showing up and serving the beer.
So they're not showing up until 5:00?
Correct.
So they're not even going to try to set up before that, before all this traffic? And now they're, I mean, I've done this before.
Yep.
Once 5:00 hits, you're never getting near that venue.
That's fair.
Is, is there any way to...
So, yeah, if the board wants to entertain an amended motion to cover them from four, that would be acceptable.
So we've moved in second, and do we want to amend or defeat that motion and make another amendment? Doesn't matter.
I mean, I was, I'm in the Rotary Club.
No, understand.
So we did three to eight, because we know that we're going to show up there with it early.
I know, they're going, they're going till nine, so maybe they're going to catch the...
So I, I remember in the past, when Mr. Ethier had applied, I inquired about him having a different set of hours, and he noted that that's when he would be showing up. So if the board is comfortable, again, giving them that flexibility, then that would be fine.
So why don't we rescind the motion? If you could rescind the previous motion?
Move to rescind the previous motion.
We rescinded the motion. We don't need to go through the second and all that. So now, if we can make a new motion, same motion, but four to nine, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I just think...
Okay. I thought maybe they're doing it strategically and staggeringly.
They're never going to get in there.
Everyone sells out early, so they'd have a...
Maybe, but it's over at eight, I mean...
So why don't we go four to nine, then? Same motion as printed other group.
It's over at eight, why are we going till nine?
I mean, I don't want to mess up his complete application. I just figured, maybe he needs an hour to get his stuff out of there. I don't know.
Motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license application of JT Ethier on behalf of Greater Good Brewing Company for the Yuletide Market on December 7th from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item in the last beer and wine license is a one-day beer and wine license application of Gene Scaff on behalf of Broken Creek Vineyard, the 2024 Yuletide Market and Light the Common on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Like the last applicant, Broken Creek has been here before, so no requirement to appear before the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval. Second.
And just to clarify, there has been, the updated certificate of insurance has been provided, so that was in there. So have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, update on town manager's goals. We're going to move that to our first meeting in December. Okay? So next item is to review an act to recommend the Warren Articles for the November 18th, 2024 special town meeting. Mr. Mizikar, we want to take a high-level, we've gone through the Warren Articles before, but take a high-level walk-through, the various Warren Articles. If there are any questions, we can ask them, we'll take them in order for each article for questions, and then we can, I guess, at the end, then come back and recommend or not recommend.
So I will provide an overview of each of the Warren Articles, and happy to engage. We have Director of Planning and Economic Development, Christopher McGoldrick, and both Assistant Town Managers in the room as well, so we can go into any level of detail you'd like on any of the Warren Articles. So just let me know if you want us to go deeper on any particular article, we're happy to do that. So Article One is providing $15,000 that would be raised through taxation to fund costs associated with the 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee, and this would be a separate set of funds that's set aside for the committee's use, that would be managed through the Office of the Town Manager, making it separate and distinct from the funds that were placed into the special account. It was established by Town Meeting just a few years ago for the same purpose. Overcomes the challenge with the general law. It prohibits us from spending from that account until one year before the anniversary.
Okay.
Just keep going?
Yeah, why don't we keep going, and then when we bring them back on our vote, we can debate each one. Any questions now? We can debate later.
Okay.
Any questions on Article One for the 15,000? Okay.
So Article Two is adjusting the fiscal year 2025 operating budget, the current fiscal year budget, and this article seeks to raise $1,367,000 from taxation and also transfer funds internally within, between departments, which requires Town Meeting approval, and I'll just highlight those changes that we're looking to make. So we look to add $10,000 to the Treasurer Collector Department's budget for purposes of managing costs associated with the Tax Title Program, which is delinquent taxpayers and filing fees to preserve the town's right of first position when taxes are due on those properties. The second adjustment would be adding $585,000 to operating support within the health insurance line item, and this is to cover costs associated with new enrollments, net increase of new enrollments greater than we budgeted for, and also higher-than-anticipated cost increase within our Medicare-eligible or our retiree health plans that go into effect on January 1st. The third item is $122,000 increase to the Fire Department's salary and wages. Despite best efforts of making adjustments over the past few years of increasing the Fire Department budget, unfortunately, we have three firefighters out for different reasons thus far within the fiscal year, and we can foresee a shortfall, given the duration of those extended abstances, and we want to make the adjustment at this time because that would make, preclude us from having to use the reserve fund that sits within the Finance Committee's budget, given such a high amount, which is almost 50% of the total reserve fund that we have appropriated in the $122,000. The second-largest adjustment that we'll make to the budget is increasing the pension contribution by $500,000. This will help us get a higher percentage of funding. We're no longer fully funded due to some market declines and other adjustments that were prudently made through our January 1st, 2024 actuarial analysis. So this $500,000 will allow us to place more money into the pension trust earlier than we could get market gains from that, and also make up some of those losses that we had in prior years. We're looking to transfer $50,129 from Public Works Administration to the Town Manager's Office, as we are transferring where the procurement, a procurement position sits. Originally, it was within the Department of Public Works, and now that position sits within the Office of the Town Manager to better serve all departments across the organization and not just DPW. Two more adjustments, $50,000 increase due to electricity rate adjustments within the streetlight account, and finally, $100,000 addition to the School Department, which will, is intended to be used for security and HVAC upgrades across the district. And that's it for the Article Two with budget adjustments for the operating.
Any questions or comments with respect to Article Two?
So the funds for this, these additional expenses are coming from?
Taxation.
Okay. Not, and local receipts, or no? Is it just taxation?
So yes, including local receipts. So we will be adjusting local receipts within the budget, but we also have what's known as new growth that we're able to contribute. So this will not impact the tax bill at all going forward. These are dollars that are available. The additional taxation is new growth, which is new taxable property that is within the community that was not anticipated in May.
Is there a breakdown of commercial versus residential on that?
We, yeah, we'll have a full discussion on that next Tuesday when you set the tax rate, but I can tell you that of the $111 million in new growth, 51% of that is commercial and 49% of it is residential.
It's a nice change in terms of percentage.
Correct.
Okay. First time in a while, or second time in a while, right?
Second time, back-to-back years, right? Only the third time in the last 20 years that commercial growth has exceeded residential.
Which is huge, because, okay, and that explains where we think the tax rate could go.
Right.
Okay, okay. Nothing else on two, let's go to Article Three, please.
Article Three is making additional capital investments, particularly purchasing two vehicles. One is a vehicle within the Fire Department, be utilized by the Deputy Chief's position. The second is a police cruiser, which is replacing a cruiser that was totaled in an accident earlier in the year. We're requesting $60,847 for the fire vehicle and $50,000 for the replacement cruiser. We are still working with our insurance company to get a higher amount of funds paid back, given our insurance policy. We're requesting $50,000. It's a conservative number, but it is the number that we have right now that we need to make up the difference. And time is of the essence. We do want to get this cruiser ordered and get it back in service while we're in fine operating position right now with regards to our fleet within the department. You know, one or two more issues, whether they're mechanical or, or an unfortunate accident, we'd be in a much different situation.
Thank you. Any questions on Article Three?
Just a quick clarification from the Finance Committee hearing. I think there was a question about why we are purchasing a hybrid vehicle, so just want to, you know, I guess, clarify, that's to be in, not in compliance. Sorry, I'm thinking about a future article. To be designated as a green community and also is in alignment with our municipal climate action and resiliency plan.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly, technically, just to be clear, police vehicles are exempt from green communities, but we have been purchasing hybrid vehicles. We can provide the associated fuel mileage and cost and, and all those things at Town Meeting if there is questions associated for it. It's definitely in alignment with our climate action plan. You know, so putting those things together, it is an initiative that we've taken on several years ago, and hasn't been providing additional costs to the community for maintenance or, or things like that associated with vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Article Four.
So Article Four is adding $358,958 into the override stabilization account. This is funding that is available through taxation. So what this means in a nutshell is we're not spending all the recurring revenues that we anticipate for the year. So we're putting funds aside for future use within the operating budget. So it's a, obviously, a policy of this board to ensure that we meet the current needs of operations, but also set funding aside to preserve the duration of the Proposition Two and a Half override, and, and that is exactly what this article does. It continues to set funds aside.
And the question that came up during FinCom was its recurring funds that go there, not non-recurring, so you don't create that cliff.
Correct.
Good. Any other, any questions on override stabilization? Article Five.
Article Five is appropriating $29,936.20, which has been received as part of the transportation network companies per-ride assessment. So these are Uber and Lyft rides that originate within the town of Shrewsbury. There's a 20% assessment that is incurred by the riders every time a trip originates within a community. The state gets 10 cents and the municipality gets 10 cents. So over the past three years, simple math, is there's been over 299,000 rides that have originated in Shrewsbury, and these funds will be dedicated to alternative modes of transportation, and most specifically, we utilize them for pedestrian mobility initiatives, sidewalk and crosswalk.
Thank you.
Access and improvements.
Any questions? Another question, I come to during FinCom, why not come up every year? It's a dollar amount. That's why there's not enough. Any other questions?
I was just, um, thank you, sorry. I was just curious if we ever get data from the TNCs about where the rides originate and the destinations?
I haven't seen that, but it's something that we could ask of the state. I don't know how closely they track that. We, we just get a dollar amount, but we can follow up.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd be interested in looking at that, just to see if we could continue promoting the via-service, perhaps. You know, I, I know that would decrease this dollar amount, but, you know, I think that'd be a cost savings to residents who are using it, so.
Although this may go up if there's a ground round in town. All right. Any other questions? Article Six.
So Article Six is requesting the transfer and appropriation of $2 million to fund design costs associated with the Department of Public Works facility at 205 through 211 South Street, and renovation project here at the Town Hall at 100 Maple Avenue. So this would build upon the work that has been started by the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. They began their work after the Select Board set the charge this past spring. They've done conceptual design and feasibility with regards to the DPW buildings at 205 through 211 South Street, and this would allow for further design and investigation, which will include the Town Hall. So the Facilities Optimization Committee identified an opportunity to be able to relocate administrative offices from the Town Hall to 211 South Street, which would preclude the need to build an addition on this Town Hall. It would provide efficiencies in DPW operations and free up about 4,500 square feet of space. So freeing up that space would mean that we'd have more opportunity to service the School Department needs and the, and the municipal needs that are currently located in this building. We've talked over the years about space constraints that we have. Many of, you know, some of those things include, you know, less than optimal, or more than optimal number of individuals within spaces, within offices, within various aspects of the Town Hall. We don't have a dedicated break room for staff to be able to go, go to. We lack conference spaces within this building, and many aspect of our opposite operations serve without the benefit of having any natural daylight into office spaces. We'd also take the opportunity to modernize several aspects of the building, mainly in life safety. That would include sprinklering the building, removing hazardous materials, including asbestos, from certain aspects of the building, replacing a 27-year-old heating and air conditioning system that is, you know, seven years beyond its useful life. So, and renovating the bathrooms of this building, which are original from 1966, or at least most of them are. So it's really an opportunity to provide a very efficient approach to tackle two of the biggest physical space challenges associated with municipal operations. Again, just to reiterate, this is a $2 million request to do further design work. We have struck a preliminary estimate for all the construction work associated with this project at $32,500,000. We would come back to Town Meeting for any necessary future appropriations, which would require a borrowing authorization. As the board will remember from a previous meeting, it is our commitment that if we take on a borrowing authorization that includes a debt exclusion, that we can structure the debt to not have it increase taxpayer bills year over year. There will be an impact to the bills, that is, we will have to make new debt service payments that we otherwise wouldn't have, but tax bills would not see an increase year over year simply because of this project. For those who are interested in understanding what that cost would be regardless, in its peak year, that would be about $120 on the average single-family home bill. So we would be splitting the cost between the utilities and the general fund tax, general property tax revenues. So we're trying to do our best to share the cost among the appropriate aspects of our organization that will benefit from these services, use best financial practices to allocate costs associated with utilities to those utilities, minimize the property tax bill, as we know it's the largest tax bill that residents face, so mitigating that is really important, not only to this board, but to us as we think about how we handle not only this project, but any future capital needs of the community.
Could be clearer, it'd be a debt exclusion.
It would be a debt exclusion.
Not an override?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on the article? We'll get later to debate and comments on the, when we get to vote to recommend or not to recommend. Okay, that's good.
Do you mind if I, I, I think maybe we, we should acknowledge the feedback we're getting. We're getting a lot of questions from residents about the bundling of, so I know we have to deliberate later on what our vote is, but I feel like we need to talk through that.
Yeah, sure.
And I suspect we're going to get the question at Town Meeting about unbundling it. So I know we've talked in, in prior meetings about the reason this is called optimization in terms of there being moving pieces, moving DPW from Town Hall to this newer facility at South Street, kind of hearing the community that they didn't want expansion, renovation of Town Hall, so this was sort of mitigating the need to make that investment here, but I think we need to think through sort of our response to the, the community feedback or concern that, you know, why aren't we unbundling them and having people vote on them separately?
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's a couple of financial considerations that I'll start with whenever we are taking on a project at the same time. First, it's, it's not the first time we've done this, and you can maybe say they're more closely tied together, but we put forth with the police station also a comprehensive reconstruction of our public safety radio system that was not just associated with the police department, it was associated with police, fire, Selco, Department of Public Works. So that was a $5 million investment that tagged along with the $30 million investment or so in the police station. So when we take on projects like this, we, we, we save real dollars upfront. It costs us about $60,000 every time we access and issue bonds. So it costs about $30,000 for us to get through all the legal rigor associated with identifying, or making sure that our bonds are eligible to be tax-exempt, to have our financial advisors access the market and, and get bids from reputable banks and lenders. And it also saves us, because it costs about $30,000 whenever we have to get a new bond rating, so we get a bond rating every time we borrow. So $60,000 in the grand scheme of this project, you know, it, it's small, so I get that. But when we look at the project and we think about this building in and of itself, we need to take the opportunity, if we're moving DPW out, to clean and renovate the space where they currently sit for its more proper use. When we take on a project like that, we have to be careful that we don't trigger code enforcement or, or other requirements because there's a dollar value associated with it. It also will provide us our opportunity to use that space as swing space as we renovate the rest of this building. So we'd move DPW out, we'd move offices up there temporarily while we renovate other parts of this building. That would be a much more substantial savings because we're not having to lease another facility or lease temporary trailers to move that office space to. And, you know, just on a bottom-line basis, we are not trying to be sneaky or hide or, you know, do anything with this. We're, we're presenting the costs associated with all the projects and looking to move it forward for efficiency and optimization of both of those facilities and for no other purpose than that. So, I mean, you know, I guess that's my off-the-cuff response to that, and happy to answer any other, you know, more detailed questions and provide further information at Town Meeting.
Yeah, we, we were asked that today at, at office hours, and it's, we talked about optimization, and bond market, we didn't admittedly talk about, but the thing is, is that you still have a 27-year-old HVAC system, so it's, it's truly making the, while the dominoes are falling, you want to do it all at once and have that, I guess, one-time disruption, for lack of a better term, and then get the new, get the, the old slash new renovated part of the facility, get everyone in their spot, do it once, right? And it's part of a plan rather than disrupting operations twice, and we already know we have real needs with this business, the building. Okay, I mean, that's, that's the important piece. I think Town Meeting, that, that, we have the note, obviously, in the book, but to talk about that reason, why are they coupled together, it's important to give context about the dispatch together with the police department, that this has been done before, that this is why we've done it. Yes, it's 60 grand, but yes, in this case, it worked exceedingly well with the police station, and that's the thought here. I think providing that context upfront would be very helpful for the discussion.
Just one other thing. So we've also seen over the past few years, and I know it has occurred at least in Easton and Foxborough, and I know that's not Shrewsbury, but just for point of reference, those communities have taken on multiple complete construction or renovation projects by bundling multiple projects together. And, and one of the things that that precludes is residents from saying, oh, you're just going to hit us with something next, you know, two years from now or a year from now. We're, we're identifying the current needs that we need to take on and trying to find the most efficient and cost-effective way to solving that, precluding the question, what are you going to do next, next, you know? So, I mean, it, it's also another consideration. You see it other aspects of the country and at the state level, and actually, we've even done it here in our, you know, Water Capital Improvement Plan more recently, right? Like, we find the value of identifying that overall capital need over the next three-to-five-year period and go into the voters and explaining it all to them and, and... and go into the voters and explaining it all to them and allowing us to be as efficient as we can with the use of the law.
And the other piece that you just talked about, at the high watermark, the average single tax bill impact from this, and then you look at this portion of it. I mean, that's another way to articulate it as well. But that, that's an important way to do it. Just again, upfront, explain what it is. And we talked about that as well, that if you decouple it and then two years from now say, we need this, the same question would be, why didn't you do this two years ago?
Yeah, why didn't you think about, we, yeah.
So we went, we went both sides, we understand it, but they are to me, the way we're doing this, they are inextricably linked, the way we want to do this. And it's to provide the current need now. So I just think that's, it was a really good conversation that we had during office hours. It's a very fair question. And I think that the thought has been there and just a town meeting, I think it's worthwhile to have that explanation.
Yeah, I mean, it came up at the, you know, the public hearings, it came up in office hours. I've gotten messages from several residents about it. You know, it's sort of, it's this new thing. Like, we've been talking about it since the onset of presenting the project, that it was, it was combined for a reason, for efficiencies, to sort of look at all of the capital needs, to prioritize, to mitigate, you know, taxpayer impact, yada, yada. But now that we're like heading into town meeting, all of a sudden, it's like, you know, there's this narrative out there that we're like trying to slip something in. And so, while I agree we've been transparent, I also recognize that as we get closer to town meeting and people are just starting to sort of immerse themselves in the details, it's important that we do take a step back and talk about why we took this approach, but be prepared to answer the question of, you know, why, why we would, we're bundling it. And I think the next question's going to be when it comes time to decide on the funding, would we unbundle it at that point? So, I just think we have to sort of be prepared to address that.
Something that you were saying, right? Like, I heard at the, at the, you know, just in narrative at the finance committee meeting, but also like that by asking for this $2 million for the 60% design work, then we are then pretty much tying the hands of town meeting because the investment would be wasted if, at the next point in time when we were asking for the borrowing authorization in the spring, that town meeting would feel that their investment would be wasted if they didn't go forward with the project. I just want to point out that this is routinely how large capital projects are handled. And the reason for that is to bring that funding request for the design work to town meeting so that we can talk about it now. And if there was an unwillingness by town meeting to fund this $2 million design work, it's a clear signal that this is not something that the community is willing to support, and we stop. The other thing too, I just wanted to kind of go back a few years when the police station was first, you know, being discussed. It was a project to look at the municipal campus. And it included a renovation and expansion of town hall and a renovation at the senior center. And because of the pandemic, the select board at the time voted to only focus on the police station because the needs there were the greatest. And so the, the needs at the town hall have not disappeared. But because of the opportunities presented, understanding that the water and sewer garage, through no fault of the town not maintaining it, but because it is a building from the 1950s, you know, have, needs to be replaced, right? We have this opportunity to add office space, to renovate the town highway garage, and that opens up the opportunity to do the renovation work at this building without having to do an expansion. And I, I'm glad that you brought up that there was the $5 million add-on to the police station project, right? I look at those $5 million capital expenses as too big to be coming out of the operating budget, but too small to be a standalone debt exclusion. And when you take that $5 million and you, you think about it in the context of the entire borrowing, it's not adding a significant amount of money to what the overall impact would be on a tax bill. And so, this isn't us trying to create, you know, trying to pass, to slide something by. You know, we're really trying to say, these are the needs here. We're not looking at upgrades or expansions. We're looking at replacing infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And when you think about not funding it through a debt exclusion, I mean, a debt exclusion is exactly what it sounds like. You're excluding it from your regular operating budget because if you don't do that, you're going to starve the operating budget and you're going to see a reduction in services across your municipal departments and your schools. $5 million is a lot of money to absorb. And then it's just, if we're talking about this, the other piece about this project, right? When we looked at this as a board, I think it first came to us in March, right? That there's this need here. You know, we had it percolating in the background, but looking across all of the needs, not just municipal buildings, but school buildings, and where does it slot in so that it's not creating this huge jump or spike in the tax bill? You know, we see the opportunity, but also understanding that that water and sewer garage needs attention now. And when I look at something like this, I understand that there's a cost, but I always want to be respectful of taxpayer dollars. And to me, it's a financial decision. And do I want to be putting money into a building that I know is going to be a short-term fix and then have to explain to a taxpayer, well, why didn't you spend X amount of dollars more for a permanent solution? This is a permanent solution. It's how we do things in Shrewsbury. We maintain our buildings well, and when they come to the end of their useful life, we say so. And we say, let's decide how we want to move forward. And, and this, this article is a, is a step towards that. So we want to hear from town meeting, we want to get their buy-in, we want to get their blessing. Yeah, go forward because we recognize the value of this project. If town meeting says no, then we have our answer.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just want to note, you know, the water and sewer garage building was built in the 1950s, but it wasn't a building that was designed to last 100 years. I live in a home that was built in the 1950s and it's doing just fine, but it was built to last. Though, these types of induct this, the style of building that the water and sewer garage was not meant to last to 2024 when it was built in the 1950s. So it's not an issue of not maintaining a building or maintaining one of our assets. I don't know if Mr. Muzikar or Mr. Baldinger could tell us how many public buildings we own? How many buildings in town that Shrewsbury owns?
I don't know the number. I know is 1.2 million square feet of space.
Well, that's through 19 buildings that Public Buildings Division takes care of, but we actually have 23 buildings, a few of them are highway, water, sewer, and treatment plant.
Got it. 23 buildings.
So with any, you know, when you own a home or you own a public building, as the town of Shrewsbury does, there's always needs. And when you, we occasionally need to make an investment in the infrastructure of those buildings. And this is an opportunity for us to do that. When the garage was built in the 1970s, it was designed so that we could expand it in the future. And this is an opportunity to, to utilize that space that is still serving the town well. But it's an opportunity to expand it, update, you know, ADA accessibility and, and all of the, the needs that are in that building, but without having to tear down and build an entirely new building, where the water sewer garage is a different story. That building is, has exceeded its useful life, so.
Yeah, I mean, just going back to town hall, this bill was, what, 66?
1966, yeah.
And the reno was 97?
Correct.
And with 30-plus years? And what we're trying to do is get another 50 years out of it with these changes. With any, like we said, with any roof, any home that we own, you're changing your air conditioning system, your boiler, your roof after a period of time. But when you have a great structure, we make our buildings last. And everything that we're designing to do is future-ready in 50-plus years. So that's just part of the strategy and the optimization. Any other questions on six? If not, we'll go to seven, please. Prudent investor rule.
So Article VII would allow us to change how we invest money with, how we invest the funds that we hold in trusts for particular purposes. So there was a change to the general laws with the fiscal year 2024 state budget that allows trust funds to be invested on what's known as the prudent investor investment rule rather than the legalist. The legalist is a narrow set of about 25 quote "blue chip" stocks that funds can be invested in. The prudent investor rule is more of a theory of safe investments depending upon the particular goals and requirements of the funds that you're investing. In this case, it would be eligible trust funds that include our affordable housing trust, any charitable trust funds that we hold on behalf of others, library trust funds, school trust funds, and cemetery trust funds. So in total, about $10 million lie within those accounts. We already used the prudent investor rule on other investments that we make on behalf of the town using funds. One that comes to mind is our other post-employment benefits or our OPEB trust. We've invested that as a prudent investor since May of 2011. And we've seen an annualized gain on those accounts at about 5 and 3/4% during that time. When we look at the remaining trust funds, we've only earned about 3.2%. So, you know, it's proof right there that given us the opportunity of still being really conservative in our portfolio investments. I don't think anyone's private investments, you'd be screaming from the top of your lungs if you earned 5 and 3/4% since 2011, given the overall market gains. But it still gives us a little bit more opportunity to leverage our, our assets on behalf of these various trusts.
Any questions? Article VIII, personnel bylaw proposed amendment.
So board members, you'll remember that Human Resources Director Christina Ordung came in a few meetings ago to talk about a variety of changes that we're proposing to our personnel bylaw. These changes target administrative improvements, competitiveness with regards to our employee benefits packages. And these all target in retaining and recruiting high-performing employees. So some of the changes that are being proposed would be adjustments within the amount of vacation time that employees accrue. We'd be proposing to increase those rates at every band except for the top band. So our entry-level employees would be able to earn three weeks of vacation. After 10 years, after three years, you go to four weeks vacation. And then after 10 years, you go to five weeks vacation. Director Ordung provided a really great set of data at the finance committee and gave about a 25-minute presentation. I won't repeat that all here. But we know that our average employee tenure at this time is just a little over five years. And we documented the number of employees and anticipative cost of making these accrued changes. The second change is adjusting our sick leave plan to broaden an employee's use, ability to use sick leave for caring for others on a short-term situation. And currently, that's not permissible under our bylaws. So simple things of taking a loved one or someone in their care to a doctor's appointment, that's currently prohibited and that would be allowed. And then adjusting what is longer-term, but would still be considered short-term disability. So if that is caring for yourself, we'd actually be reducing the total amount of leave eligible to an employee from 52 weeks to 20 weeks. And when caring for a loved one, we'd be offering paid family medical leave at a variety of different levels. So six weeks for caring for someone who has an illness, up to 12 weeks for bonding, for parental leave of the birth or adoption of a new child, 12 weeks for post-pregnancy care, and then up to 26 weeks to care for someone who is a veteran injured in the line of duty. So this is probably the part of the proposed changes that really modernize and seek to get us more competitive with both the private sector and a growing number of municipalities who are making these changes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Article IX, MBTA.
So Article IX is a proposed adjustment for transit-oriented development that would bring us into compliance with Chapter 40A, Section 3A, which is known as the MBTA Communities zoning initiative at the state level, which requires by right housing development zoning within the community for up to 15, at least, excuse me, 15 dwelling units per acre. We've proposed a district that's mostly situated between Route 9 and Route 20 and also goes south of Route 20 to 33 Green Street. We strategically located the district there because of existing housing and proposed housing developments and other infrastructure investments that we're making within that area. The proposed TOD language is a result of months' worth of work by planning and economic development, months of feedback, including public engagement sessions on the language of the bylaw itself, investigations and studies to leverage the highest amount of affordable housing within the zone that we can possibly get, which has been determined that we can require 15% of the units to be constructed at an affordable rate and restriction. And then meaningful feedback from the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities about the language itself, all of which we've taken into consideration and crafted the final bylaw that we look forward to presenting at town meeting.
Any questions? I know we've talked about this for a while.
A lot of great information presented at both planning board hearings and the finance committee public hearing. I encourage town meeting members to go back and watch, especially if your questions are related to the impact on schools. The second hearing, I think, was on October 30th, is that right?
Twenty-fourth.
Something like that.
Seventeenth and 24th.
24th, okay. So the second planning board hearing was the one where Superintendent Joe Sawyer joined and pretty much walked through the numbers. Yeah, just really good, really good information.
Yeah, and maybe just a shout-out to Taylor Galusha, who's been sending town meeting updates and sort of breaking down
Yeah, timestamps.
Various, yeah, the various public hearings and the timestamps on, you know, when the articles are discussed. I mean, I agree with you, but I do hope that we make it easier for people to do exactly what you're recommending.
Right. And if you watch it on Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube channel, you can put it on one and a half speed and it's fast. Carlos taught me that.
I like that, it's great.
Article 10.
So Article 10 is the citizen's petition that was previously discussed.
So do we want to get into that when we get to debate? Do you want to have some comments then? Right now, it's, when do we, so you gave a presentation at the finance committee hearing. I think when we go to deliberation, it's worthwhile to hear those comments. Not that I don't want to hear your comments now, but let's just go through, we heard Article 10 earlier. We'll take thoughts that you have when we get to deliberation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does that work? 11, so Articles 11, 12, 13 and 14 are community preservation committee articles. A lot of interesting debate at the finance committee hearing, but do you want to take a
Sure.
Very quick spin through that?
So Article 11 seeks to appropriate $25,000 of Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of installing lightning protection on the first congregational church. Article 12 provides a request to use of 5,200 CPA dollars for the purpose of repairing trim on the first congregational church. And then the third article associated with the congregational church seeks $10,000 for conducting an architectural survey for the first congregational church. So just first and foremost, I want to mention that these articles have been reviewed within the three-pronged criteria associated with providing CPA dollars to religious-based organizations and entities within the community. There's a 2018 Supreme Judicial Court case out of the town of Acton that informs this decision. And town council has agreed that it is an appropriate use of funds within those confines and the anti-aid amendment within the constitution of the Commonwealth. So, happy to answer any questions associated with those articles, but they have all been determined to be eligible uses of CPA funds.
I just have one comment, other than the debates, which were helpful, that if you look at the Community Preservation Coalition, they talk about church preservation projects generally in far greater magnitude than what's being presented here. We'll get to the merits of each one of these. But Yarmouth Port, First Congregational Church, Easton's Unity Church, gave a couple of examples, Westford's First Parish Church United, which were much which were much bigger renovations that were using CPC funds as long as they passed legal muster. So, they, they also have taken up the subject and it serves also as good background um, for when we debate, but had been vetted by Town Council anyways. But much bigger projects have been utilized using CPC funds. Any questions? If not, we'll go to article fourteen. Did you just do fourteen?
No, I have not done it. So that is utilizing CPA dollars. I lost my place here. Of forty-five thousand dollars from CPA funds uh, for the continuation of the preservation of the historic gravestones within Mountain View Cemetery, restoring and preserving.
Any quick question? Are those the ones right now with chains around them or some of them? So if you, not chains, but just yellow, those are the, okay, thank you.
Both loaded.
Okay. And the first part closest to the church. Thank you. Any questions? All right. So we had an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. Now let's get to the process where, I'm not going to reread the articles, but what I'd recommend is just we'll go through each article. Um, I can do a high level, but with respect to article ten, would ask Ms. Mizzicar to give comments. But with respect to the other articles, we can go through one at a time, and if there's any discussion or debate, let's do that upfront, and then we can take a motion depending on the pleasure of the board. How does that sound? So article one, going back there, this is um, fifteen thousand dollars. It's to raise and appropriate and transfer fifteen thousand dollars uh, for the town of Shrewsbury's three-hundredth anniversary celebration. Any questions or comments? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move to recommend article one.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion and nay? I don't hear any. Motion passes unanimously, five, zero. Article two, um, this is budget transfers in effect to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds in the Treasury sum of money as Mr. Mizzicar went through. So article two, any debate? Pretty fulsome explanation earlier, and I know we've talked through this before. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve article two.
Second?
So move to recommend article two, and second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
No, it's good. It's all good. So unanimous. Article three, um, on the costs associated with the general capital budget, one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, is presented earlier by Mr. Mizzicar. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm going to make a motion as we go forward to recommend each of these, but then people can vote for or against it, so.
Yeah.
Just for ease of.
Okay.
Process. So, um, motion to recommend article three.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. That works. Article four, override stabilization account transfer. Any questions, comments, debate? I don't see any. Make a motion?
Move to recommend article four.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Article five, transportation network companies provide assessment. Any debate? Any comments?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion?
Move to recommend article five.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article six, Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee, um, looking to appropriate two million dollars to, to fund sixty percent design of the DPW facility in Town Hall renovation project as previously described. Any debate or comments?
Um, yeah, I just would like to uh, thank, I, I appreciate the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee for their work on this. Um, I support this approach because, um, you know, we understand that there are needs to be addressed here at, at the Town Hall as well as South Street, and I think pairing them together is the most cost-effective way to do that. Um, this appro, approach leverages our declining debt service model, as we've discussed already, um, which is a benefit to residents. And I think that moving this forward would put this project on a path to ultimately be decided upon by the residents of the community, which is important as we continue to engage with the community on the capital needs that will directly benefit um, everyone in town. So, I support the article.
Thank you. Any other comments? I know we've talked about this a lot over the last several meetings. Um, what's the pleasure of the board? Thanks, thanks for your comments.
Motion to recommend article six.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article seven is the prudent investment rule. Any clarification, comments, questions, any debate on this? Pretty straightforward. Your motion?
Motion to recommend article seven.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eight, this is the proposed amendment to the personal bylaw, adding Plan Four as well as change the vacation schedule, right? The highlights of that, as you described, which the full proposed bylaw changes in the special town meeting book, also presented by Director Ordung at a couple meetings ago in detail, as well as during the Finance Committee hearing on November seventh. Any questions or comments? The only comment I have is that was brought up as well, when we had, um, I have office hours today and just seeking clarification and just talking about it, a longer-tenured town employee had asked questions, and we talked about it serving as a retentive tool, average tenure being five years. And it was an interesting discussion, talking about how pensions or town benefits are long-term goals for a lot of employees, but we only have employees for five years. We're not even at the point of being vested for these employees, but the important piece is to attract and retain these employees. You get institutional knowledge, expertise, um, and you see as folks have been here for a long period of time, they leave, it's hard to replace them with just one person. So, we are competing with other cities and towns. I know, talking with Director Ordung that in exit interviews, this was an area that we heard some feedback on, and that's why we pulled this lever to become more competitive, but it's also important to realize that cost impact is expected not to be any, given the funding mechanism is eighty percent of their salary, and the expectation is that other employees will be able to backfill, and if not, we have that twenty percent, if maybe, for whatever reason. So, this was an interesting, and it was good to talk to a resident about town meeting during our office hour, so that was really helpful.
Could I just add one thing based upon those comments, especially with maybe the purview of a, of a long-serving staff member, uh, I think that, that you referenced that. Um, the public pension system in Massachusetts has drastically changed over the last few years as well. So someone who was, say, hired um, more than twenty years ago, used to contribute five percent of their pay um, to the pension system, and have that defined pension of, up to eighty percent if they worked, um, I believe it was just shy of thirty years. And over time, as we've seen in so many industries, the cost share of employees has grown, and now employees contribute eleven percent of their salary. Um, they don't have the option to invest that anywhere else. Um, and they have to wait, um, you know, on, well, the tenure that you need on average is greater than thirty-two years in order to, you know, achieve that same eighty percent uh, maximum pension. Um, and employees used to get that eighty percent calculated on their final three, or their top three years of, of earnings, and now it's the top five. So I, I unders, you know, and I wasn't here during office hours, but just envisioning, you know, someone who, again, may have been hired a few decades ago versus what, and a, a new employee walking in the door, you know, we give them, you know, a nice pat on the back and says, you know, in, I don't know, twenty-sixty, come talk to us, and, you know, you know, you'll have your pension. It, it, it's drastically different, and, and it has, um, it requires more investment by the employee, again, eleven percent, six percent greater than it used to be, um, and that pen, that pension takes a lot longer to get to. And we all know that people don't stay in their employment like they used to. So, again, our average is about five years on the books right now.
And that is what we had talked about as well, where we said that this is a real benefit that, given particularly our average service time, they're going to see. Someone five years into their career doesn't think about twenty-five more years from now, and whether or not they've contributed. Like, you know, it's all of those factors that, um, the labor force is definitely more transient, and we see that. We have a lower voluntary turnover ratio, nevertheless, we still have one, and we know that it's also been challenging in the past to recruit employees as well. So, this is just another tool in our toolbox to hopefully make us competitive, or more competitive, and keep employees that are high-performing in particular, right? Okay, thank you. Anything else before, if not entertain a motion?
I move to recommend article eight.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article nine, MBTA zoning, or otherwise known as the Transit-Oriented Development Overlay District. I know we've talked about this a lot. Mr. McGoldrick, you've talked way back when, when you said this will be the process, and here we are. Originally going to be brought to town meeting, um, went through the preclearance over the summer, uh, passed with the EOHLC, went through all of that, we got feedback from residents. The original zoning coverage has changed based on feedback. We had survey data. We've had changes to the bylaw language itself through a process of collaboration, even the Planning Board on questions on the special permit, which we made language changes to address the concerns with a discretion. So that's now in front of us. Any comments?
I'm happy to, happy to.
Go ahead.
Give my comments.
Please do.
Um, I, I will reiterate that I, I support this article in order to make compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. It's certainly been a journey with Shrewsbury's plan up to this point, but I think the plan that we have before us is a responsive one that addresses the feedback, as you've mentioned, Mr. Chair, and um, I commend the Planning, Planning Department for um, that work, and appreciate that um, this proposed zone already incorporates areas that are developed or going to be developed, which will help mitigate um, some of the new development within the zone that I think is a concern that many in the community have raised throughout this process. I will say, speaking as the board's designee to the Affordable Housing Trust, that this plan is in full alignment with the trust's goals and mission of establishing zoning that would help create more affordable housing, which will help us get, which will help get us closer to the ten percent goal for our subsidized housing inventory. Um, I'm glad that fifteen percent of units created within the zone will be designated as affordable. And I'll just reiterate my comments from our meeting back in May, that Massachusetts is in a housing crisis, and communities across the Commonwealth, including Shrewsbury, have a responsibility to respond to that crisis. So, I encourage town meeting members to support this article, and, yeah, that's it.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, go ahead. You can go first.
No.
Beth, go ahead, and then.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I, I think that this current zoning overlay is very responsive to resident feedback, and that, um, I think is, it was, it was a good decision to, to stop in May and not bring it forward to town meeting. You don't really know sometimes until you get a little bit away and some distance. Um, but I think it brought the temperature down and allowed us to really come together and work on an article, um, or, or a zoning overlay for this article that was more of a collaboration. Um, I hope that residents feel that way. Uh, the Planning Board hearings were focused on resident feedback and focused on resident concerns. I thought, as I said before, having Dr. Sawyer there to present the potential impact to schools, uh, I think knowing, right, because we now know that, you know, we changed the zone a bit, so we now know that Pulte's development is, is moving forward. We have, we're in the process of negotiating a development agreement with four oh-nine South Street. There's just more things that we know now. Um, and also, I think the most important thing that we know is that we did go through the state's pre-adoption process to get that feedback and a greater degree of certainty that our proposal will comply. Um, I mean, our task was to provide a viable path to compliance. I think it's in the hands of town meeting, um, to decide whether or not we will comply. I'm in favor of the article, um, because I do agree that there is a housing crisis, and unfortunately, the only way to solve the affordable housing dilemma that we find ourselves in is to create more housing. Until then, the prices will just continue to rise and, and stretch all of us, um, until we have a sufficient housing to bring those costs, it's more into alignment with what people can reasonably afford.
Thank you. Please do.
I, I support this, this article in terms of presenting a viable compliant uh, plan to town meeting for their consideration. I think that this is, um, it's unfortunate the way the state approached it. They passed a law, and then they told, you know, basically told us, tell us how you're going to comply, and people interpreted that to, you know, tell us if you will or will not comply, and it has been, you know, clunky, to, to say the least. I think that I am personally very sensitive to the resident feedback. You know, residents are concerned about overdevelopment, growth, et cetera. We've had prior meetings where we've talked about the development specifically in this overlay district. Um, to me, it, it really boiled down to what do we gain versus what do we lose? I don't think we gain anything by saying we're not going to comply. I think that this plan is really aligned with there, where there is already development, or as we've said, where there is expected to be development while we're still under forty-B. So I agree, it is the responsible thing to do. I think that, you know, we have a razor-thin budget, and for people to say like, oh, well, these grants don't matter, or they're such a small amount in the grand scheme of our budget, like, we just can't afford to sort of say like, oh, we don't need half a million here, or several million dollars there. I think the state is, you know, starting to double down on, you know, what actions they might take, um, against cities and towns that, that don't comply. I think that, you know, again, it boiled down to, with forty-B, there's going to be development in certain areas regardless. Um, I don't think this invites new development because it doesn't necessarily change the opportunities for developers. Um, the, the overlay is in areas where they could come in under forty-B and develop regardless. So, um, I guess I just recognize the, the frustration, the reason that I think the approach was taken at the, um, some of the recent hearings and having Dr. Sawyer come in, is people are like, you know, is this basically going to be the tipping point? You know, no, the town's not going to implode. We're not going to not be able to sustain the growth of another couple hundred, you know, apartment units. This isn't going to blow up the schools, but I think that we've tried various ways to say that this is what we've seen in school-aged children, in similar developments. Um, I think hopefully town meeting will, you know, in their deliberations, really look at those facts and make a decision that is best for the community as a whole. Um, and so, I, I also support the article as it is, as it is presented.
Um, so there's a lot to unpack on this, and I'll try to not belabor the issue, but um, housing and development in general is a lightning rod issue. I think nothing more so right now than the MBTA zoning or MBTA Communities Act. Um, so there is a housing crisis in Massachusetts. Um, there is a lack of diversity in housing options, especially with modest and affordable homes. Um, young people can't afford to live, um, in many communities in Massachusetts, and we see that in our demographics, that we're losing, um, young people, um, in, here in Shrewsbury. Um, a comprehensive analysis was done by town staff and consultants to develop the proposal, uh, that we sent to the state. It's been reviewed by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and, um, it takes advantage of land that's already being considered for development under the state's existing forty-B law. Um, we can require fifteen percent of the units that are, could potentially be built under this zoning bylaw to be designated affordable. Um, we've been working on a strategy to help Shrewsbury meet its ten percent of We've been working on a strategy to help Shrewsbury meet its 10% affordability requirement under 40B, which would finally give us the ability to have more control over residential development in the community. The overlay allows us to address the housing crisis, address affordability in the community, and could bring us closer to achieving that 10% affordability requirement. Adopting the bylaw puts us in compliance with the state law that does have legal precedent where zoning powers ultimately do lie with the state. It gives us autonomy over where and how the overlay will look in our community. And if we ultimately reject the zoning, we're at risk of losing access to state funding that is critical to the community. I think it is the right thing for Shrewsbury to adopt the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Eleven my comments to, much covered it. What the law will, was for greater density in a small, in an area, right? What it does not do, it does not require that these units be built, nor does it require where they are built. We have had our area, our zoning area, which we, through collaboration, have changed where we initially proposed it and where it is now. That is local control. We understand that 3A, the state is part of a bond bill and a few paragraphs with little debate, this is where it was brought forward. I get it. But if you look at the underlying law and not the arguments through in front of the SJC by Milton, there's no question about the constitutionality of the underlying statute. It was the guidelines or regulations, which, Mr. Mizikar, if I'm corrected, for Green Street, for example, that doesn't help us. It's under the original three or four areas under 3A, correct? So you have this risk that, let's just say the SJC comes back and says, you know what? These are regulations. You didn't go through the right process. The regulations are not correct. Under the statute, it does impact us immediately, right? And the question would come down to, or we can be sure that, given the current administration that we've seen in the Commonwealth, we realize that there is real aspirational goals for housing. And we can be sure that if the SJC were to come out and split the baby and say constitutional, but these are guidelines and they need to be promulgated as rules or regulations and go through the process. That the legislature is going to come in and the question is, will it, at that point, you let it go, you don't comply, will the second bite at the apple by the legislature still be, if you haven't adopted it yet, you can still put it where you want? Or does it become something even totally different? I think that our plan is thoughtful. I think that it complies. It's been a collaborative process. We know it's not ideal in terms of how it was put on the cities and towns. But we've taken the feedback. It's been interactive. We've gone through the numbers based on history. Feel pretty confident in those presented by Mr. Mizikar through collaboration with the school department. Even conservatively so at the highest level of students at multifamily dwellings that we don't see in our two latest developments. So I think this is, this has been thoughtful. And Michelle hit on one point that with our housing production plan, we still know that we have migration of 25 to 29 year olds. And we're losing really the lifeblood of our community. They can't afford to live here. And what's ironic about that is I look at our teachers, our young teachers, our young policemen, policewomen, firemen and firewomen. A lot of them went to schools here. I don't know if they can live here. And as the future of our community, we know that there's demand. There's demand everywhere. Unlike many communities that have lost population, people still desire to come to our town for good reason. It's a great town. But I come back to, it's compliant, it's thoughtful, but it, it's, I don't want to say minimally compliant, but I know that's the term that we've used, but it's a balance. And all things considered, it complies with the statute, losing the grants. Teresa, like you said, razor thin budgets. We have questions about costs all the time. We need every dollar that we can get. That's been a big drive by this board to minimize impacts on taxpayers and to get those grants. It's important. So we're not going on the operating budget. We have a model. We have an agreement that we've agreed to adhere to and prolong the override. And all of these are ingredients in the decisions that we make. So I'm in favor of it. I think it's been a, a long process, an iterative, an iterative process. But in terms of what we need to do and the overall impact on our community, I think the balance has been met. And the, the loss, I don't see an upside other than saying, no, state, we're not going to comply. And the downside is not worth that at this time. So I, I'm also in favor of recommending this to town meeting. Anything else?
No, I think I just, I don't want to come across like I'm not in favor of affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. It's more affordable than a single family home in some instances. But, you know, again, I think it's, I'm not in favor of supporting this article because I want to see more development. I'm looking at it in terms of, again, I, I don't think it invites any more development than we would otherwise get. I think we maximize the development that is already in existence and we, we sort of mitigate the, the liability of not being in compliance. I think that, you know, our efforts on affordable housing are sort of almost a completely separate discussion from what we're talking about here. Because while a certain number of units even under 40B have to be designated affordable, I think we could all argue about the affordability factor there. So I just wanted to personally go on record is that I'm not supporting this to invite more development. I'm looking at it as controlling the situation as much as possible.
I think I've heard that. I think it's, it's reconciling all of these aspects together. And together, if you get a, a lip in a 40B project that happens to be part of the overlay and we can get to 10% affordability, I don't think we're inviting development when development could happen anyways. I think it's, at the same time, moving forward with a vision to get to 10% compliance, understanding that we have to comply with 3A. And then at the same time, can we also comply with 40B to fall under the safe harbor as well? Understanding our vulnerability being less than 10%. And just the other thing I want to say is that, as you look at the zoning district, that where there's already developed properties, the cost for a developer to come in and turn around and raise all of those buildings and acquire the land and have a little more density, because Shrewsbury Commons is about 13 per acre. And there's some realities there too, that if the state said, hey, you have to take virgin land and build on that, that'd be a whole different discussion. But that's not what this statute requires. So I think all the statements that we've said can be reconciled in one way or another, understanding that we're not saying, hey, yay, come on in. It's just the realities of what's going to happen, or what could happen under 40B. So I, I, that's why I hear you. I think that we are saying along the same things. Anything else? Appreciate the comments. Mr. Mizikar, any thoughts?
No, nothing really additional. I certainly agree with the board that we've gone through a thorough process and come out with what I think is the, the best possible outcome to situate both the zone and develop comprehensive language that will work for Shrewsbury.
Thank you. Gone through it a lot, not from before, thinking it was going to go through annual town meeting in May. So if there's nothing else, I'll, is there a motion?
I move to recommend Article nine.
Second?
Have been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 10, citizens petition. Appreciate Mr. Richards coming in earlier. Appreciate the conversation that we had, and I thought it was a great dialogue, to be honest with you. And I appreciate having conversations. And, and that's what I heard everyone on this board say, and I want to emphasize anyone watching at home, that's great dialogue. That's what we want to have as a community. Come to our office hours, reach out to us for a cup of coffee. We're open to that and would love to. But let's have a conversation. And agree even, you know, as Mr. Richards had said, at the end, you can walk away and say, we agree to disagree. And that's just a really good conversation to have. And I hope that on all levels of conversation in our community, this is representative of what we like to have and who we are as a community. So, Mr. Mizikar, I'll turn it over to you for Article 10, and then we can also talk about it. You had, I think it's important to just some historical context that you had provided at the, at the Finance Committee. If you could just provide high level, just some thoughts.
Sure. Yeah, so certainly gave, you know, roughly 25 minute presentation of all my thoughts at the Finance Committee meeting. And I'd be happy to do that again to town meeting. And, and I do appreciate, you know, Mr. Richards and the other petitioners' thoughts behind this. And particularly Mr. Richards' approach and engagement as he has been open to discussion. So the overview of the existing form of government, I think is really critical to this. And it's a system of government that was thought out and well orchestrated comprehensively. It's something that the town took on in the early 1950s as there was growth at the time and perceived complexity. Now, we may look back upon what we are now as a community and the amount of money that we spend and the number of residents that we have. But, and compare it to then and say, well, you know, it seemed easy then. But obviously, there was a, a growing interest to make Shrewsbury what it is today and allow it to be a, a community that grew and was a desirable place to live. And, and I think that comprehensive system that was put in place through the Town Manager Act, which is proposed to be the amended, in the limited, open, limited town meeting or elected town meeting members, is really important that it stays together as an entire system. And as, as some board members talked about this evening, pulling at one string of it because of some recent outcomes, changing the form of government and desiring to get different results, despite the petitioner's, you know, agreeance that, you know, town meeting is really what controls it, I, I think is, is ill advised at this time. So, you know, local government reform was something that was going on across the country in the early 1950s. Shrewsbury took that up in, in the early 1900s. Shrewsbury took it up in 1953 and has created, I think, a form of government. If you compare other communities from that point forward across the Commonwealth, I think our outcomes have been better. And that outcomes have led to growth in, in certain times and in certain ways has led to less growth and different types of development than other communities experienced. But it was also, it was always overseen with a balance between appointed officials and elected officials. And both are obviously critical. I still think that the scale tips to planning board members being appointed. I think the characteristics of elect, elected versus appointed members for planning board really makes it more important that we continue to appoint them. Many of the comments were stated earlier, but I would just like to reiterate that when you think about whether a, a position should be appointed versus elected, whenever you have limited, limited policymaking responsibilities, your primary responsibility is guided by laws and regulations. And there's specialized qualifications to perform the functions of the position. That tips to the appointed side. And certainly, there are communities that function with appointed planning boards, or excuse me, elected planning boards. But I think the outcomes of our planning board is different. I think it's much more consistent. I think that planning board has brought things to town meeting and town meeting has shot it down. That happened as recently as our last town meeting, you know, when, when adjustments were proposed to the zoning bylaw and they weren't supported by town meeting. And I just think that separation of appointed officials having their hats and, and their direction as far as following the bylaw that's set by an elected body is really important for that balance. The direction that we moved in from the early 1950s and continued through 2006 has been in the direction of moving away from elected officials to appointed officials on the executive side of the House. And I appreciate Mr. Richards' comments. But I also think he is a great example of how we appointed officials engage with residents and can do so as meaningfully as elected officials. Certainly, all appointed planning board members are Shrewsbury residents. And I know from my dialogue with them that they would be open to conversations about anything that residents would want to bring before them. We've had meaningful levels of applicants, as Mr. Samia pointed out earlier this evening. On average, five different applicants per vacancy or opening or, you know, appointment for the board. I know that far exceeds the number of elected officials or number of individuals running for elected office within the community. And, you know, that's meaningful engagement. It's dialogue. It's different and, and it's balanced. It's also important that, I don't think you, we shouldn't underscore, in a very complex world, how meaningful it is for voters to look at one aspect of the organization when it comes to municipal operations and be able to hold that body accountable. And I know that body is this body, the select board. It reduces complexity and means that, that residents can take the guesswork out, even if they are engaged on a much more limited basis than some others may want to be. It makes their decision-making process much simpler. The appointed officials also allow for the kind of emotions that get involved under short-term situations that elected officials feel to be much more muted. They are a couple more layers removed, but that doesn't mean that they're unresponsive. It allows them to work within the confines and the guardrails that are set up by elected officials and confidently make those decisions without, without having to worry about whether they are going to get support if they have to make an unpopular decision, despite it being within the confines of our bylaws. And just like at, at the Finance Committee, I feel it's my obligation, not only to this body, but to town meeting, to identify what I think are deficiencies within the, the warrant article as it's presented. This is no disrespect to the lead petitioner, anyone that supported drafting the document. And I respect the fact that drafting changes, especially changes that impact our governance structure are incredibly complicated. And I just think there's a couple of critical aspects that have not been addressed as this article is crafted and will go before town meeting. And that is what town meeting has to consider. It's what's drafted and what's before them. It's not necessarily what someone thought or intended to do or desired or wanted to get to an outcome. It's really what's before them in a warrant article, and that is the only fair way to do it. So I just want to address a couple of those really, really quickly. So, and I've shared all these with the lead petitioner. You know, he reached out to me after the Finance Committee meeting. We had a meeting actually at 9:15 this morning. Appreciated him coming in and, and talking about this a little bit deeper, and I shared written comments with him later in the day. So I, I think as the article is drafted in and of itself, there's a reference to Section 3 and Section 2 of Appendix B of Chapter 559 of the Acts of 1953. There is no Appendix B. Appendix B is a reference to our general bylaws. It's where we reference Chapter 559 of the Acts of 1953, which is the Select Board Town Manager Act. So I feel that may not be fatal in and of itself, but it, it certainly may be a challenge when this, if, if it's approved by town meeting, when the totality of the documents and what was considered gets before the state's legal counsel team, before it'll allow the House or the Senate to take this up in committee, they may have issues with that. When it comes to how it's constructed, I feel would be, it's really important and, and needed that the article should have stated the number of planning board members that were to be elected and the duration of the term that they were to, that they are to serve. And customary would also be how to handle a vacancy on the planning board if one occurs prior to the expiration of any term. Those are three key things that come along with any charter charge or any, when, when designated, any position as being elected. And those don't exist within the- And those don't exist within the Warren article that has been submitted by the petitioners. And this is, gets a little bit complex. But the redlining and the adjustments that are proposed, I don't think meet the mark because the section where a planning board is being added in is Section Two, which is entitled "Other Elected Officials." And that section basically took a group of elected officials, other than the Select Board, which was set aside in a separate section, and said, "These officials shall continue to be elected as they have been previously," right? And we know that there is not a currently elected planning board. And you'd have to look back seventy years prior to that to identify a previously elected planning board. And that's certainly not the intent of this section of the Select Board Town Manager Act. I think, just looking one section prior to that, where the Select Board was called out in a separate area, because there were changes made to the Select Board. You went from three members of that body prior to the Act to five members after the Act. So the authors took the time to draw that distinction, provide the term of office, identify how those individuals would be elected. And I think something very similar to that would be required to have an effective proposal to amend this Act and provide for an elected planning board. Now, I call upon the Finance Committee to not vote on this just because of those issues. I still think regardless, that even if it was as the form and substance as would be required to effectuate the change, that this is going against the exceptional outcomes that have been provided through the current system and that the current system should change. And just to be really clear, I don't make that statement as myself personally. I make it as the person sitting in the seat that is the town manager position for the town of Shrewsbury and understand the expectations that not only this board but the community places upon the outcomes that we generate through the processes that we're charged with. I think an appointed planning board remains the best way to support the policies that are established through town meeting.
Thank you. Comments? Debate? I know we've asked questions before, heard a lot of questions at Finance Committee. Thoughts behind this before we vote?
I feel like we did talk about it quite a bit when the petitioner was here. I think that, I think this is a reaction to outcomes. You know, the petitioner was clear to say it wasn't just one outcome, it was several. But I do think that it is the reaction to not liking certain recent major, you know, development outcomes. And I will say that I attended the public hearing last week with the Finance Committee. I think the first three or the five hours that it went on. But the petitioner said something that stuck with me. Who would not be happy with an elected planning board? And it really, to me, was sort of meant to imply that residents would be happy and town government would not. I have really looked at this from a number of different angles. And I certainly respect Kevin's passion for sort of our structure, but was formulating a lot of these opinions before I heard your comments at that same hearing. I look at sort of the Planning Board in its totality and all of the work it does. I know residents will show up for, you know, certain major developments. But there's a lot of work done by the Planning Board, very intensive work. And I do think that, by and large, our Planning Board structure has served the town very well. As I acknowledged in my comments earlier, I think we could all improve. And it's not just the Planning Board, it's us, it's Finance Committee, it's the Planning Board. It's any sort of board or committee that is facilitating public hearings or when there is significant public interest. I do think we can improve how we operate in that respect. But I don't think that this is a reason to politicize the Planning Board. And I say that in the context of being an elected official. I certainly don't think it's, you know, seeing that other towns and cities do it, I don't think it's catastrophic for the town. I just don't think that what we have right now is broken to the extent that I think it needs to be turned from appointed to elected. I think that, you know, we have to continue to engage people and invite them to apply for these positions. Not everybody is going to be selected. But I do think that having people engage, having people become town meeting members, having people understand how bylaw changes, you know, come about, et cetera. I think they can affect change that, you know, maybe they want or have a better experience than they have. But I just, I don't, right now, after having spoken to so many people, both outside of Shrewsbury, within Shrewsbury, I am not, and I recognize the room was full of, you know, about fifty residents who were in favor of this. But again, it's sort of taking a step back, looking at a town of forty thousand people, looking at how we operate, looking at how difficult it is to, you know, get volunteers, looking at the intensity of that volunteer position. And that volunteerism applies whether or not you're appointed or elected. I just don't think that we benefit as a town, getting back to that question, who would be happy? I think in the long run, I don't know that Shrewsbury would be happier with an elected board. So when I came down to making my decision as to what I would personally be recommending, I don't recommend that we, that we change to an elected board.
Thank you. Amit? Go ahead, Carl.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I won't reiterate some of the concerns that I have for changing our process. What I want to make sure that we acknowledge, and I think we all have, is the feelings and the perception that folks have and the dissatisfaction that they have with our Planning Board process, how our local government maybe operates. There may be some misunderstanding or some information that's not reaching folks. And I think that this conversation was a good one. I think it's good for us to continually think about how we can improve that communication and engagement with residents. Because I certainly think that, you know, folks will continue to feel that feeling if they do not see any improvements or see any changes that we do on, you know, how we engage with our residents. So, you know, I just, I wanted to acknowledge that because I could feel the dissatisfaction from the comments, from the energy in the room. I certainly have many, I have had many conversations with residents throughout Planning Board process, throughout the Planning Board process for our major decisions recently. So it's something that I continuously hear when I have those one-on-one conversations with folks about the dissatisfaction. And, you know, I think it's something that we need to continue examining to make sure that we are addressing those concerns. Those are my comments.
You can go ahead. Okay. I appreciate all the comments from everybody so far and appreciate the sort of historical background information. I think it's important to understand where we came from and why. And I think, you know, we look at Shrewsbury today and the desirability of our community. And I think, you know, I mean, I personally think that our system has been working well for us. And we are such a desirable community because of that structure and system that has served us for seventy years. As somebody who has, is an elected official, I have, you know, campaigned, not just for myself, for this position, but I have been involved in campaigns for community initiatives in Shrewsbury. I have, you know, put my life aside for months at a time to talk to voters and to work really hard to try to improve our community. You know, and it's always been an uphill battle. And I can tell you, you know, it's, campaigns are not for the faint of heart. And there are many people who have served our community very well for years who would never be willing or able to put themselves out in the community in a way that a campaign for an elected position requires. I am, I'm a talkative person, but I'm shy, don't like being a public official. It's very uncomfortable for me. I don't like public speaking and I don't like being the center of attention. And running for this position was something, it took me a really, really long time to get to a point where I could be comfortable enough to put myself out there. And we heard last week at the Finance Committee meeting from somebody who has served our community very well on the Personnel Board, who said she would never run for an elected position. And she's incredibly talented and qualified and would just not ever do that. And I think that there are many people in the community that feel the same way. I think there's also a huge equity issue with running for an elected position. It's incredibly expensive. It takes an incredible amount of time. My term's up in May. And my son, one of my, I have three little boys. And one of my boys asked me if I was going to run again. And he was really sad that I'm probably not going to be home much for a few months. And that's really hard on my family, on my kids. You know, I'm lucky I have a spouse that was willing to step up and cover anything that needed to happen at home. But not everybody has that. It's, it costs an incredible amount of money. And there's also an equity issue with, you know, diversity. I'm the eighth woman ever elected to this position. Only eight women have ever served, and I'm sitting here with number seven and number six. Mr. Garcia is the first person of color ever elected to this position. If you look at our elections for town meeting positions, almost every time somebody has a non, like, sort of traditionally American name, they tend to have the least amount of votes in their precinct for town meeting. That is a real struggle to overcome. And there are people who have, you know, are talent and education and skills that can serve our community that may never be able to win an election. I think there's a lot of people that go to the ballot box and, you know, we have to vote for town meeting members, but you don't know who you're voting for all the time. And, you know, it's hard to get to know every candidate. I had an experience knocking on doors where somebody heard my name, you know, Michelle Conlon. And they go, "Oh, nice Irish girl, you've got my vote." It's not even my name that I was born with, it's my husband's last name, you know? And I had a great conversation with that person, and I'm sure they're a lovely person. But, you know, that was their first instinct, was, "Oh, a nice Irish name, you've got my vote." And I think that there, you know, that is a real barrier and that's something that we should consider. You know, I thought we had a great conversation tonight. There were a lot of wonderful ideas for improvement. There's always room for improvement and we should always strive to do better. I do not think this is the right way for Shrewsbury to do better. I think, you know, the Planning Board is guided by zoning bylaws that are set by town meeting. And I don't think that the outcomes that residents haven't been happy with in recent years would be, would have been different if it was an elected board because they're following the bylaws that are set by town meeting. And not just where they set by town meeting, but they were reaffirmed again this past year with a citizen's petition attempting to overturn some of those bylaws. So I think I'll leave it with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, everyone has said a lot of what I would have wanted to say. Also, you know, I saw a roomful of residents this evening who are frustrated with the process that they feel excluded from. They're looking for their voices to be heard, and they see this petition as a way for their voices to be heard. And I want to say that we've heard you, right? We've heard you. Hearing you doesn't mean that I'm going to agree with everything. What I do agree with is that we need to do a better job of making the process of engaging with elected and appointed boards one that is accessible to everyone. And by doing that, we need to put the ground rules out there. And I'm willing to work on that initiative, whether it's a guide, a citizen's guide to participating in a public hearing. What are the norms? Do we clap? Do we not clap? Do we boo? Do we cheer? Do we say our name? Do we give our address? All of that. How long can I expect to be here? Does my written comment mean as much as my being in-person comment? You know, just having a meeting at seven PM on a weeknight is a barrier to people attending. So for me, I just, I do not support making a change in isolation as a reaction to high-profile Planning Board hearings where people felt that they were not heard and that changes were not made in response to their concerns. When you say, "Who benefits?" Right? I think you're correct. If we look at seventy years' worth of this appointed Planning Board, we see a thoughtfully planned community. I think that we need to take away that people are looking for more from us as their elected and appointed leaders. And we can give that to them without completely unraveling our form of government. So I am going to not recommend this article. But I am going to recommend that we start working more collaboratively with residents to get these types of changes in place so that even if a board doesn't make a decision that you agree with, you still walk away feeling that you were heard.
Thank you. Most of the comments have been covered. But I think, or what I find important, and it's in the Ipswich Government Study Report and the Committee Report, I think there's a lot of consideration for appointed boards. Similar concerns that appointed boards, like Dennis or Harwich or those communities had about the politicization of the process. And I don't view the planning, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I view the Planning Board as judiciary. I don't view them as policymaking. And I wouldn't want to politicize that board. I think that it's worked very well. And Kevin, you said something at the Finance Committee meeting, largely to the effect that the thirty percent or so of towns that have appointed Planning Boards, it's through their thoughtful take-control at the local level to do this, rather than rely on default rules, right? That's a pretty powerful statement, that communities such as Shrewsbury that thoughtfully removed, so there were sixteen different departments or whatever, going down to seven, down to five, right? Elected now, when we took out the treasurer and the clerk, that it was a thoughtful process to create a business environment that has worked exceedingly well for us and other similar communities that you listed. And I would say that when you look at other communities, they will say, "Look how well Shrewsbury is run. We are a model for other communities." I think if we're looking to improve engagement, I don't think this is the way to do it in terms of electing. You look at the numbers, you look at the last few elections, not many people run. It's costly. We've covered that. And I think that the comments at the Finance Committee meeting were perfectly said. Very qualified individuals saying, "I would not have served if I were elected. I would not have done this." And I believe the numbers that, Kevin, you presented about the number of people who've applied, I think it was thirty-seven, twenty-six different people, eight appointments, that's over seven years. At the library, over this, it's probably been three people every year for three seats. School Committee, now, this is more recent, we have maybe three for two seats. There were many years it was two for two seats. And Planning Board, that you look at, the Ipswich Government Study Committee, again, that you have twenty votes, twelve votes, write-in candidates for Planning Board. And I think that is a board that does require technical knowledge. I know we have, I'll say it, and I appreciate Mr. Richards quoting me. We do have a lot of smart people in this town, but we all have our own limitations. So ideally, we're going to have folks with the technical expertise that can apply the parameters from which, which, within we work, and that's the zoning bylaws. I know what we can do better, though, is explaining at the town meeting level the importance of everything that they do and the impact. I think we do do it, but we need to do it better. We need to provide more opportunities for town meeting members to ask questions. I know we've improved. We've worked hard. Taylor's done a great job. Taylor Kalusha's done a great job. Kevin, your whole staff has done a great job being available. But we should not stop trying to do better. I think office hours were discouraged when we first started it. We tried a second set of office. of office hours, didn't get takers on Saturdays, but we're getting now a steady stream of different questions. Some special town meeting, some, "Hey, this is going on, would like to ask, don't have all the answers, we can come back to them." I do believe that's a better forum than great dialogue back and forth, civil, you know, civil conversations, appreciate the proponent coming up and the tone was great for everyone, you know, it's a great conversation, we all want the best for our community. But sometimes even if you have all five, you, the natural lefts and rights that you go down in a conversation will be muted when you're in a situation like this. You may not ask that question because on camera, it's just not the natural dialogue that sometimes you can have. We've all had one-on-one coffees with people, happy to do so and, and all ears to make sure that we do better. I just don't believe that changing from appointed to elected will get the desired result because an elected board should, will still have the same bylaws, they'll still have the same applicable state laws, and they're still gonna have to follow everything that's done at its town meeting. I still think is the area of where the conversation is more focused, but that's my belief. So I'm not gonna rehash, I think everyone had good comments. I also think that Mr. Richards had good comments and appreciate his answers to the questions that we asked, but I'm not in favor of recommending this article at this time. I'll add a chance to speak, anything else? Thank you all for your comments and thank everyone that's still watching from home for coming in and watching, but those that came in earlier too. And again, I want to rehash, I'd love to have you come to office hours. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion on Article 10.
So I'll be consistent, motion to recommend Article 10.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion is defeated, zero to five. Thank you. Article 11, Community Preservation Committee, this is relating to an appropriation of $25,000 to installing a lightning, lightning protection at the First Congregational Church. Any discussion?
I actually would like to say something on this one. So I've heard, you know, sort of, there was a lot of debate that went back and forth about, you know, this is a church, it's a religious organization. Mr. Miskar addressed Supreme Judicial Court ruling that, you know, informs that the decision is inappropriate use of funds. I just want to comment on this and I, I think, you know, if, if anybody goes back and watches the Community Preservation Committee debates on this, there was a lot of good conversation around it. There is, I'm, and I just want to say, I'm not a member of the church. There, the First Congregational Church is historically significant to the town of Shrewsbury. Back in the 1700s, in order to incorporate a town, I think it was 15 families and a meeting house that were needed in, in order to incorporate. And the First Congregational Church was that meeting house. It celebrated its 300th anniversary this past year and it really is foundational to the, the founding and the incorporation of the town of Shrewsbury. And for anybody who's looking for some context on this, the, the recommendation for the lightning rod installation on the church is a response really to the fire that occurred at the First Congregational Church in Spencer. I don't know if it was a year or two ago, three years ago, but it was, you know, it was a really, it was a tragedy for their, their community. And I think the, the First Congregational Church in Shrewsbury, it anchors our town common, it's sort of like that central iconic place in the center of our town. And having that historic, historical significance to the town of Shrewsbury, I think is, is really an important piece of information here, so.
Anything else on 11?
I, I just want to thank the Community Preservation Committee, I mean, they spent hours at their meetings vetting these articles. It is part of the Community Preservation Committee's charge is to present, put, place these articles on the warrant. Our board doesn't determine whether or not these articles are placed on the warrant. You know, they're there for the, for town meeting to debate and decide upon. You know, I'm glad that you brought up, Mr. Samia, the other communities that have used historical preservation funds for churches. Because I really do think that's, it's an important thing to note, that it is an allowable use. And so, you know, I did take that into consideration when I was thinking about these articles because I do know that certain members of the community are concerned about separation of church and state, and if not that, then what about other churches in the community, right? What's to stop a St. Anne's or a St. Mary's from coming forward? I don't believe their buildings are historic, but nothing, I guess, stops them from coming forward. It's community preservation project, uh, money, so, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot to think about if you aren't privy to all the conversations that happen at Community Preservation Committee meetings. And I, I think they're gonna be making a presentation at town meeting, is that correct? Okay, great, thanks, because what's in the packet is very basic. It doesn't really capture any of the rationale behind how these are considered, I guess, allowable.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for Article 11.
Motion to approve, sorry, motion to recommend Article 11.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Four to one, passes. Article 12, this is 5,200 from the Community Preservation, purposes of repairing trim on the First Congregational Church. So my comment on this, and I, it was an interesting conversation at Finance Committee, but I, the one area that generally I thought CPC funds weren't for was repair. So I struggle with this one. And, and as much as I'm sure they need it, I, I, to me, I, I'm not in favor of it just because it's a repair. The other, the next one, not to preview future things on 13, I get it, that's more of a capital project, it's more of an improvement, this is a repair. So for me, I get it, but if they're gonna give future articles, I mean, generally I defer, it's just repair, this opens up a lot more to me. I'm fine with the church, I'm fine with getting the legal opinion, I'm fine with CPC funds for that, but then it opens up the door of what's a repair and what's allowable for me. I mean, I, I know they debated this and all of that, this is one where I am not in favor of recommending this one, but I know it's not a big dollar amount, that's just my view.
Yeah, I, I probably should have clarified on the first go-around of this, I just, I don't disagree, it's allowable, Article 11, Article 12, Article 13. I think it's more just the balancing it with the intent of the, the CPA and sort of some of the resident feedback that, that I've heard and sort of where you draw the line, like yes, the First Congregational Church is important, an important fixture in the community, but like if an historical home needed that same type of like repair or, like I just don't know that it would necessarily be aligned. So I, I think that, I guess just a preview, I'm sort of applying the same logic to each of these, each of these three. I will say that I even struggled with the, the restoration of the fire truck last year, the year before. But it was, you know, this is smaller dollars in comparison to that, but it was, to me, it was like sort of the, the broader community as a whole, sort of more in line when they think of really sort of like, you know, historical preservation, like that's sort of what they, they had in mind, and I'm not sure that this necessarily is aligned with, with that ultimately, it'll be town meeting members' decision, but I don't feel like I'm aligned with it right now.
Okay. Anyone else on 12? Or motion?
Motion to recommend Article 12.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
So one, four, two, three, sorry, it was.
I was a no.
Okay, one, four. Should have said nay to be consistent, sorry, that's getting me. Article 13, First Congregational Church, $10,000 appropriation for conducting an architectural survey for the First Congregational Church. So this is to evaluate options to repair the original wooden floor below the ground level of the First Congregational Church. So for me, this does fit within what CPC funds are for. I'm comfortable, given the Community Preservation Coalition's guidelines, the SJC's opinion and our council's guidance, that for me, this fits, the type of project it fits, and it's not an expense, it's more of a capital project, so personally, I'm okay with it, but that's my view.
No, I kind of look at it the same way, right? This is an architectural survey, I'm not doing a repair with this article. And also, I just want to note that this is not just to benefit the congregation, right? It benefits the community. The church is heavily used by community groups, including, I think it's a charter organization for a Boy Scout troop.
Three troops.
Three troops.
And Girl Scouts as well.
And Girl Scouts?
Yes.
And then I also know AA uses the building for meetings on a regular basis, so this is a, you know, it's an important building for our entire community, it anchors our common, it's on our town seal. You know, I can, I can get behind the architectural survey. Of course, I would assume there might be an article in the future asking for repairs based on what comes out of this survey and I'll have to think that through when the time comes, but for right now, I support Article 13.
Anything else? If not, there are motion.
Move to recommend Article 13.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Okay, four to one, passes. Uh, recommended, sorry. Last, Article 14, this is for 45,000 for gravestone restoration. Any questions, comments? If not, there are motion.
Motion to recommend Article 14.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. So thank you, everybody, for thoughts, comments, debate, appreciate public feedback, appreciate all the hearings that we've gone to, all the thoughtful discussion with the various committees. And we'll have a special town meeting on Monday night, so let's keep going here. Next item, Item 14, to review an act to appoint one member to the Historic District Commission to fill a vacant seat with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. So we had two residents, I think it makes sense to read them, right? Oh, no, okay. So we have, we have the results that Katie Brill, who actually lives in the Historic District, and the bylaw itself suggests that that would be given preference, but still the majority, she received the most votes. In terms of process, again, similar to other processes, that Justin Dobson passes out to each individual member a spreadsheet, that member does not know how anyone else votes, it goes only to Justin, he tabulates. I don't get it until about 10 minutes before and today it was like literally like early part, part of the meeting, but that is open meeting. So that is how we did this process and so congratulations to Katie Brill, appreciate the other individual who also applied. This is the first individual, I think, in the Historic District itself, given the bylaw the way it's written.
At least in recent years, yes.
And then under 15, review an act to appoint one associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacant seat with a one-year term set to expire.
Do we have to vote on that?
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, God.
It's after town.
Sorry. Now it's Lawrence Wilkes over, the streetlights are on. So can I, is there a motion? Sorry.
Uh, move to appoint Katie Brill to the Historic District Commission to fill a vacant seat with a three, three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to the next one, I'll get it right. To review and act to appoint one associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacant seat with a one-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2025. Jonathan Mack of 21 Smith Road received the most votes. So Mr. Mack will be the one that will fill the vacant seat with a one-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2025. Is there a motion?
Uh, move to appoint Jonathan Mack to serve as the Associate Member to the ZBA with a one-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2025. I could have just moved that, but I didn't know if it was completely complete.
I missed the motion on the previous one, so I'm going.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to both and again, thank you to all who are, who have applied for these positions. Next item, to review an act to designate the following positions as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A. We have a current junior civil engineer who can also be employed as a, this is basically to allow a current junior civil engineer to be employed as a seasonal winter laborer and Mr. Truman has sent a letter to us stating that this designation would enable us to expand the position's responsibilities particularly to support snow and ice operations during winter storms. So to do essentially two positions for us, be paid for two, right? That is it. So we would just need a motion to designate the juniors, the junior civil engineer and seasonal winter laborer as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 268A.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're getting there. Item 17, to review an act to confirm the town manager's appointment of Amy Dismaris, 16 Clu Street, to the Commission on Disabilities to fill a vacant seat with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to allow plowing and de-icing of specified private streets in the town of Shrewsbury.
Mr. Samia, I live on a private street, just want to let you know.
Okay.
Mr. Samia, me as well, I live on a private street.
Technically, do they need to recuse themselves, it's just they disclosed it.
It's just a disclosure, I don't recuse.
It's just a disclosure, I'm just making sure.
I've disclosed every year since I've been on this board.
Yep, great, fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you.
I do not live on a private street.
No doctrine of necessi, whatever it was, necessity, we don't have to do with that. Great. What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't think there's anything in the November 7th memo that needs to be specifically noted, this is a pretty routine.
Yeah, I mean, I could just lay it out generally.
Yeah, please.
There are private streets, most of those private streets have been in existence prior to the creation of subdivision control within Shrewsbury. Because when subdivision control came in, as new streets were created and lots were subdivided along it, we made it the responsibility of the private developers to maintain the streets until they were turned over as public ways. So these streets, in accordance with the general laws, are, have the ability to receive snow and ice operations from the town, mainly for public safety, so we do provide this, we've laid out the list, checked it this year to make sure that any private ways within the community that are along subdivisions will remain the responsibility of the private contractors and that has been done and this list comes to you at the recommendation of the Highway Division and the overall Department of Public Works.
Thank you for that.
So motion to authorize the plowing and de-icing of certain private streets in the town of Shrewsbury is listed in the Highway Division Manager's November 7th, 2024 memo.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to authorize the Chair to sign the Green Communities Annual Report for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, which is good because it's due Friday. So I will sign that right after this. And next item is Item 20, to review an act on a streetlight request of Habib Parvin Najad, 43 Gold Street, for a streetlight in the vicinity of 43 Gold Street. Would want to, as we do, send this to Selco for their recommendation back to us.
Can we ever change this? Can we ever change this? So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Correspondence.
You made it.
Email dated November 7th, 2024, for Karen Moriarty, Ray, N-Star Gas Company, DBA Ever Source Energy, DPU 24145, notice of filing on public hearings, for your information, so noted. And Item 22, email dated November 7th, for Karen Moriarty, Ray, the N-Star Gas Company, DBA Ever Source Energy, DPU 24149, notice of filing on public hearings, for your information, so noted. And then, ZBA decisions, Items 23 to 31, all decisions that were decided on October 28th, 2024, so noted. So that is it on our agenda, and it's, um, been a good discussion, a lot of topics covered. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and good night. See you next week.